Call the meeting to order any items from the public. Need a motion to approve the agenda, if there's no changes?
So moved, Mr. President, to approve the agenda for Thursday, November the 18th, 2021.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries, any questions on the purchase order?
President, if I may, just a couple items for your attention. You'll see there are two different charges, one from Tinsman Landscaping, and the other one from C and D Property Management for Mowing Services. We have now ceased mowing operations for Pike Side Waterway as well as Sportsman's Paradise. So these will be the final mowing invoices that we have for the current mowing season. Also, you'll see that on the second page, all the way at the bottom of the journal, there's a payment thirty-four thousand seven forty-one, seventy, thirty-four thousand seven forty-five dollars fifty-one cents. Of that thirty-three thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents is for the legal ad, for the sheriff's delinquent taxes. And as you know, we usually do one in the late fall, early winter, one in the spring. The current unencumbered fund balance in that line item is seventy-three thousand dollars. So this will be the disbursement out of that. So that will leave slightly more than forty thousand dollars for the spring tax sale. And I know that's something that the county watchers.
We always said for the last three or four years, at least, maybe six years, that we was hoping that that would go down because of people being called up. Collection has increased at an earlier pace, but seems like that still a large amount of property going to tax sale, so.
And as I look at the budget revenue stream for the current fiscal year, we budget about a million dollars for prior year taxes, first, second, third, and fourth year. We've already exceeded that for the current fiscal year. Some people are making good on their past tax.
Yeah, the good thing is, is, you know, when that happens, they're the ones actually paying the bill without us.
Correct.
So, all right, any questions for Mr. Davis on the purchase order? Looks like you have three internal budget revisions, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, I have three internal budget revision requests for your, for the council's consideration, all submitted by the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon. The first is from Department 700 Law Enforcement. Sheriff Harmon's requested that he, is requesting he be allowed to decrease line 341 Supplies and Materials by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is twenty-nine thousand five hundred and seven dollars and sixty-nine cents, with eighty-two point two oh percent spent to date. That seems, that may seem like it's exceptionally low with only being four months into the fiscal year, but you'll see in the state budget revision that we're putting about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars back into his Supplies Materials 700, which is reimbursements from some, from some grants we put in contingency that we're transferring over. He's also requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 345 Uniforms by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty cents, with fifty point seven oh percent spent to date. An increase line 226 Insurance and Bonds by ten thousand dollars. That currently, currently has a zero balance. You'll see that there are actually two five thousand dollar dispersments in your purchase order log this week. And it's, the internal budget revision request is to cover the deductible for two separate general liability claims that have been settled on behalf of the Sheriff's Department. The next request is for 716 Animal Control. Sheriff Harmon's requesting that he be allowed to decrease line 103 Salaries by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is a hundred and forty-three thousand thirty-four dollars and ninety cents, with thirty-one point eight percent spent to date. An increase line 108 Overtime by five thousand dollars. That line item currently has a deficit balance of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars forty-eight cents. And finally, the third request from Sheriff Harmon is again for Department 716 Animal Control, decrease line 238 Refunds of Deposits by nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. That account currently has an unencumbered fund balance of a thousand dollars with nothing spent to date. An increase line 240 Refunds and Reimbursements by nine twenty-three. That account currently has a deficit balance of nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis on the internal budget revisions? All right, moving on to changes status, we have quite a few this week. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for John Burdette as an animal control officer with an annual salary of thirty thousand sixty-five dollars. Start date is to be decided upon. And looks like Mr. Burdette would be a replacement of, of open position at the compensation rate of, again, thirty thousand sixty-five dollars. New hire recommendation received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Services for the following part-time firefighters with an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents effective November 18th, 2021. Joshua Lee, Brian Golladay, and Timothy Beaton. Any questions on those? New hire recommendation received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections for the following, Caitlin Hames, or Hams, as a QRT Case Manager with an annual salary of forty-four thousand sixty-six dollars effective December 6th, 2021. Crystal Miller as a Case Manager with an annual salary of forty-four thousand sixty-six dollars effective December 6th, 2021. A new hire recommendation received from Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for the following. Kendra Dehaven as a part-time administrative assistant/dis dispatcher with an hourly rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents effective November 29th, 2021. Adriana McKenzie as an administrative assistant/dis dispatcher with an annual salary of thirty-one thousand eight forty effective November 22nd, 2021. A new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Virginia Sine, Circuit Clerk for the Haley Morgan Roberts as a clerk with an annual salary of twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars effective December 6th, 2021. New hire recommendation received from Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator for Alexander, I have to help pull on that one. Guy? Guy? All right, as an IT analysis at an annual salary of fifty-one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars effective December 1st, 2021. Okay. Letter of resignation received from the Planning Department for Heather Williams effective December 2nd, 2021. Letter of resignation from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for Kevin Watson effective November 19th, 2021. Letter of resignation received from the Sheriff's Department for Brandon Humphrey and Robert Diaz effective November 9th, 2021. Letter of resignation received from the Day Report Center for Maria Castor effective November 9th, 2021. That's the, all the changes in status. And it looks like all the new hires that we spoke about are replacements.
They are, yes, sir.
Any questions on any of those? We have the minutes from October 28th, 2021. Everyone was present, any changes or corrections on those? Moving on to the county council calendars. We'll be off next Thursday and Friday to observe Thanksgiving Day. And, Mr. Davis, the summit is on what day?
It is on Thursday, September the 9th.
December the 9th.
Noon until 5:00. And we have got a very, very good response. I think Senator Blair has indicated that he will not be here. I think Senator Blair has indicated that he will not be here. We have not heard from delicate householder. Yeah, so, but most everyone else has indicated that they will be here. Senator Ruckert did chief response, so, yeah.
Good. Did you want to talk about? Any of the?
Yes, sir, if I may, this will be your last meeting in November. Because Thanksgiving next week, there are five Thursdays in December. December 2nd is already filling up quickly. It appears that we will have at least two issues for executive session plus a full agenda, so we expect to run late that day. We will be running into the afternoon today also. The 9th is all day because of the legislative summit. The 16th, we were hoping to have your luncheon with your staff. As you know, we all throw a little bit of money in, there's no taxpayers' money involved, and we have lunch brought in, so we, and we, if everyone's going to be here on the 16th, we really will do that. That leaves two remaining Thursdays in December, one on the 23rd with the holiday being the 24th, and one on the 30th with the holiday being the 31st. I know there have been some instances in the Asper Council, it is traveling. Councilperson Barnhart has indicated that he will be absent part of the day on the 9th, Mr. Barnhart, or all day.
All day.
All day, he will not be here on the 9th. But he is the only one that's indicated any, any meetings missed in December. And I was just wondering, for purposes of a quorum, do you want to meet on the 23rd and 30th? Those are usually both pretty light days, particularly the 30th, because we'll have an awful lot of folks off between Christmas and New Year's. I just need, for purposes of scheduling, we need some, some direction and, you know, consensus of county council. No, not, we don't have too much schedule for the 23rd or the 30th.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I told Mr. Davis to keep it on for now, but keep it to where, if we did call it, that we wouldn't have to change anybody's schedule. But, you know, we do have, it's very busy for us right now.
The 16th is West Virginia Court Meeting, I'll be out late on the 16th, so.
I think it's always a good idea to have, keep the 30th on until we get closer.
You always decide on the 23rd. You don't want to, I just wanted to see how your, how your personal and professional calendars were formatting now.
First time we've been called professionals.
Yeah, every now and then you get.
Get that recognition?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be early, but I'll have to leave early. Because I gotta be in Beckley for the meeting. I'll find out, I'll check the agenda and see, because they usually start off an evening meeting. It'll take me about four hours to get there.
So it sounds like we're on schedule for now.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And the only other thing, the second, though, we're really booking up solid, it's going to be a long day. At 2:00, I'm scheduled to be somewhere for groundbreaking, which we could actually just, you know, take the meeting off site and all of a sudden, so.
Put that on the agenda, we have to put that on the agenda for your collective reunion as a body.
Let me check with the person that's reached out to me and see, okay. I'll do that after the meeting here today. 1:30 of them, we can reconvene. If, you know. All right, Boards and Commissions, you have Fire Board tonight at 6:30 PM here in the chamber. We have on Monday the 22nd, 1:00 PM Historical Landmarks of the 5:00 PM Modern District. Tuesday on the 23rd, Councilperson Vice President Whitaker will be on WRNR. We were just on yesterday, too.
Tuesday.
And that looks like all the meetings for next week. Any change or corrections on that? We have a bond reduction for Lord Fairfax Estates, Section 3, Final Plaid Greeting. BCP File Number 2107-249 tied to BCP 2107-0191. LOC number 10705269-45, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. A bond reduction for Overlook at the Riverside Apartments, Grading BCP File Number 2110-401 tied to BCP 70-05, Grading Permit Number RO1955-19. Bond number AL101998, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Any concerns about that one? All right, we have a cancelled check request from the County Clerk's Finance Office, any questions on that? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the extended agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries, thank you, Doug, for being here.
Thank you, yes.
Good morning, Mr. Hess, you have some activity for us?
All right.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Got a few exemptions. First one I got is a taxpayer error. We just had one for this Hockenberry, they listed their vehicles in two different counties. Called it a taxpayer error for thirty dollars and sixty cents left.
All right, entertain a motion on the one personal property tax exoneration due to taxpayer error.
Mr. President, we accept the taxpayer error, personal property exemption for thirty dollars and sixty cents.
All right, have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All the ones that oppose?
Aye.
The motion, the director showed that the motion failed.
Thank you. I do have some personal property, I've got seven of them, office error mistakes we had to correct, and some reasons that's listed there, but they total up to one thousand fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents for those seven.
All right, we entertain a motion for the seven personal property tax exonerations due to officer.
So moved.
Have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Have 11 real estate tax exonerations due to officer?
Yeah, I do, I have, I think it's eight, I think there's 11 of them. And all these were, they were sold for taxes and then they were redeemed. And of course, you know, if there's a year missed, we always backtax to catch up if they miss a year. And these actually, for both 19 and 20 tax year for Maidstone, they actually redeemed the property and paid taxes for 19 and 20, but we backtaxed them by mistake. So, so we made a, attached that bill to the 20 and the 19 bills, but by mistake, so. All those were the same thing. On the second page, there's three for Appalachian Land LLC. They were the same thing, that, they got backtaxed on the issue. And if you looked at all of these, at the total, it's twenty thousand six oh seven and sixty-two cents. That's, they didn't pay any money, we're not giving them any money back. They just got attached to another bill, so it was getting rid of the paper.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion on the 11 real estate tax exoneration.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the 11 real estate tax exoneration due to officer's amount of twenty thousand six oh seven sixty-two.
Have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Got one other thing, we had a council consolidation of a couple parcels for Christine Lusher. They had two parcels in Farley Waters District, in Arctic Heights, or Arctic Hills, and so on. And map 2C, parcel 23 and 24. And we put them together so that we get one type of bill, so, just have that for consolidation.
Okay, entertain a motion for the one application consolidation of property.
Mr. President, we accept the application consolidation of property for Christine Lusher.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and a second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Region 9 Planning and Development Council Meeting. We had several guest speakers, Nick Deal, update on airport development activities. Shane Farthing was there on Zoom for the utilization of the Delaware Mills and Fashion Garment Site. And then we had the audit report, that was clean. And then we discussed a nonprofit division in partnership with the Steely Foundation, which used to be Dixie Arco. And so he talked a little bit about entering in an agreement with Region 9 for education purposes. And let's see. They have been holding an assessment committee to review the assessments annually. Pretty much it for Region 9. Then I had a Health Department meeting, and I'd like to say that COVID was the item of discussion, but actually it wasn't.
Well, that's a good thing, Mr. Barnhart.
Yeah, it's like, oh, man, of course, it's the flu. What can I say? At least to move on. And of course, they had a discussion of the due to harm program, and that'll, that's on our agenda for our support of that this afternoon. And I'll be taking care of that, that was it.
All right. Mr. Delia.
I was unable to attend any meetings this last week.
All right. Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir, actually, Tuesday, I was on WRNR radio. We had multitude of discussions about items that's gone on in the county, about the redistricting of the, of the census after they did all that for voters' needs. And then we had, what else was there? I told him that I did not have all the pertinent information that Gary Wine did, and he was the guru behind that. So Rob will probably be reaching out to him, if not, I'll get that information, because I'll be back on the radio again, and we'll talk about that some more. And then had a Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority meeting, which was done by Zoom. It was a little bit difficult for me because my phone was dying, I was trying to get a plug in. But anyway, I just had to leave my screen off the video. The ridership on demand is staying steady.
That's good.
They did the RFQ for the new facility, I think on the Corner Race in Raleigh. And now that will be advanced into the RFP, the Proposals for Funding of that. They attended a national conference in Richmond where, this is the part that I couldn't, didn't see too well. The, one of their employees gave a testimonial about his addiction and how he was in the recovery at the loss of his, I think he said his wife. And I think I would, I'm gonna have to defer some of it, because I don't want to mess it up. I'm gonna ask Elaine if she'll come in and maybe present that to us one day if she has time. I think it's worth watching because we got national recognition for that. And I want to give praises to the ones involved, so. And then we had an Airport Authority meeting. The Charter is down a little bit due to maintenance on the aircraft. Fuel sales were down only because of the anomaly that we had last year. This time we had two large commercial carriers come in and bought a bunch of fuel from us. So the Jet A's down. The instruction airplane for flight training, that is, the use is down, but the revenue is up. And that's, that is another anomaly, we would like to see that, so you don't have to wear and tear on them, on the airplane, but you, you still have revenue being generated.
We're actually looking into that to figure out why that was.
Yeah, that's, that was a little bit, I just didn't quite understand that, because usually if the revenue's up, the plane usage is up, so, something else is going on there.
And it could, could be something was just keyed in.
Keyed in wrong, whether it been a tack time versus a Hobbs time, so, that's the little difference. So you always check the tack time for maintenance on engines, not Hobbs meters, so, that's. And then I had a meeting, the preliminary meeting with the airport Nick Deal and our small committee right now for the upcoming airshow in 2023. We're getting heads together to seek out the types of sponsorships, how the venue is going to be presented. Also, tomorrow at 7:00, if you are out looking towards the airport from anywhere in your property, there will be a demonstration of the fireworks that are being proposed there. So they're going to see how far people can see it. So we've got people hopefully scheduled to watch like at Shally Acres, St. Leo's, different areas around the county. So if you happen to be out about at 7:00, look a little bit to the south, towards the Pike Side area, to see whether or not you can see the fireworks display. So we're going to try to get an idea of how large of a crowd can actually see it from over the whole county.
Right, and I, I think a lot of people don't realize how visible it's going to be. Like where my shop is at on Route 11, I can, like, now that the leaves are off the tree, I can see the tower from my shop.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I can see the tower from my shop, so I'm sure it'll be a really visible fireworks display from, from there, which is not that far from here.
I think you'll find it's going to be one of the best locations we ever had.
Yes, yes, it is.
And St. Martinburg has done it for, has done it for all these years.
Right, and they're still going to do theirs on Sunday. But, you know, I think this is going to be the beginning of a bridge to hopefully combine them together, because I think it's, the viewing area of the airport is so much more easily accessible and a lot more people can see it, a lot less congestion.
I would, I would bet that up along Hack Wilson Way up on the, the hill up in that area, I bet you could, you'll be able to see the fireworks really well from up there.
Should be able to see them pretty good from up there.
You'd probably be able to see them, that would be sure.
Yeah.
Depends on whether or not you're asleep.
I will have a blanket. Yeah, yeah.
Be like the front, like the front line of the theater.
Yeah, everything straight up. But, and it was one of them. And we had a meeting, I was gonna kind of defer it a little bit to Matt, but we'll get him back in here for the commemorative 253rd anniversary of our county.
I was gonna call him Matt, but I couldn't find him this morning.
Well, he's, he's a busy guy, so, but we've got some. That's exactly what it was.
Okay.
So, yeah, he's meeting with them, so, we'll get him back in here. We'll, we'll give a good report on, on a Thursday here real soon about all the progress we'll make. There's sponsorship levels from 25,000 all the way down to 1,000, so.
And I think the, I told Mr. Davis, we'll probably be getting an invoice for that here real soon, because there's some vendors and some things that's going to need to be paid.
Correct.
So we were expecting that.
I'm, I've already scheduled through state budget revision number 7, which will be done in December to move money, the funds that you've already approved from contingency into funding 906 or 905, which is Fares of Festivals. That department currently is not being used at all. So we'll move money from contingency over to that and we'll be able to start tracking the expenses.
This, this will be our first one that the county council has actually participated in. This will be our first one that the county council has actually participated in at this level that I know of.
And during, you know, going back to the airshow, there was, there is a, I think, the initials are ICS and National. Can't remember what to, but the acronym stood for. It's a it's a conference that's actually in Las Vegas where you go out and you meet all the airshow acts and then you schedule them to for your event. It's going to be, we were going to do it in the month of June, which is the actual birthday of the airport. But the weather is always a an issue that could be, you know, be a problem. So we're going to move it to actually in September.
We'll say.
We gotta be careful. It's not going to interfere with the WB football game, home game.
Absolutely.
And but it's going to be probably at least a five day event, so we're looking at Thursday to Monday.
And Nick's always done a really good job.
Yes, he has. And he said, you know, his budget at that time, let me get him several years ago, and with the airguard's help. But we're going to, this is all going to be on the civilian side. So I've talked to the airguard, General Cochran, about maybe soliciting a letter of of help to try to get a national act, which would be out of the Thunderbirds because they're Air Force and the Navy is the blue angels. So we're looking to do something there on that side. But they would they would house the military show, everything else would be on the civilian side. So there wouldn't be any pedestrians or any viewing from the military side. It would all be from the civilian side.
Good.
Lot of planning.
Yeah, there is. And volunteers are going to greatly be needed. So we're going to look at other organizations for to their help, like Civil War Patrol, the Boy Scouts, David Port, community service people, things like that. It's going to take a lot.
You're busy this week.
And and one other thing, the week before, I had a an invitation to go to what's called a boss lift at the airguard. And met with a lot of the military personnel and how they kind of recognized businesses throughout the state and the country and offer them their thanks to for their support for the military by giving their employees time off to do their military jobs. So it was a very nice event that they had. And I brought home a, I brought back a certificate from them thanking us for our participation.
Right.
President, if I can interrupt, we do have a bid opening at ten o'clock.
Oops, sorry. I'll ram her down.
All right. All right, moving on to, as Mr. Davis said, we have a bid opening for RFP for less lethal forty millimeter launcher sheriff for the sheriff's department. So, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. If you remember, you know, some time ago, early on in the term of Sheriff Harmon, he appeared before the council and requested permission to begin the the evolution and the introduction of forty millimeter tactical, single shot, less lethal weapons into the sheriff's department. So working with Tracy, working with the sheriff's department representatives, did put an RFP out onto the street for seven DEF Tech forty millimeter tactical single shot launchers, model fourteen twenty-five. It did appear in the Martinsburg Journal. We do have certification publication indicating that it appeared on Monday, November first, twenty twenty-one. The deadline for bids mission was four o'clock yesterday, and unfortunately, we received no bids.
We didn't?
No. We had we had no bids submitted. So we will work with the sheriff's department. It'll have to go back out for me to find out.
Might be a supply problem.
It may be. But I did want to get on record that we did have bid opening and there were no bids recently.
Okay.
Quick question. Did were these, do you have to participate as a user of one of these like you do for the tasers and things like that? To let the person receiving that non-lethal shot?
Why, you want to be volunteers?
No, no, I just didn't. I just wanted, I just was curious.
That's a good question.
I was gonna say, I'm sure we'll let you.
Okay. Well, let's draw straws.
Eddie's smiling over there.
Maybe we can, maybe we could raise some funds for something, Matt.
A fundraiser, yeah.
Fundraiser, who's gonna draw?
Y'all go ahead.
I'm done.
All right.
Sir.
Councilperson Durkin, aye.
Yes, sir. Planning commission meeting had four public hearings. There really wasn't, I mean, there was always a lot of activity, but nothing out of the ordinary for that particular commission. Heather did announce to the commission her resignation. We wish her well. We didn't get to vote on whether
to accept it or not.
To do that or not. I also had a parks and rec meeting. All the programs are up and running. Once again, honestly, they're over, some of them are over capacity. They're looking at doing additional teams instead of not allowing children to participate because they only have so many coaches or
basketball season, I guess.
It is. And of course, I think volleyball, it's almost becoming year round. I mean, it's, yes. And of course, you know, last week, two of the two of the area best volleyball teams compete one another. Musman against Hedgesville, where Musman this year came out on top, which is like eight years total. They won that championship, so congratulations.
Eight out thirteen, right?
Something like that.
Sean Marks. Let me get them back in here, you think? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But once, you know, it's just, it's nice to see kids from the Panhandle.
I think Sean's been at least there for at least eighteen years now.
Twenty-three years.
Sean's been there for twenty-five.
Yeah. But, yeah, showcase some real good athletes, you know, out of the Panhandle. So that's, that's always a good thing. The State Farm Pavilion at the Royal Park demolition is complete and construction is beginning on that particular pavilion. And the strategic plan, that plan, we reviewed it last Tuesday. And there'll be a draft plan set out for review one more time before it's actually approved. And then we'll be into the master plan phase. So there's a lot going on with them. And I tell you, of course, you know, unfortunately, you know, with the passing of Mr. Taylor, but that that board I I think is very strong. I think it's a very healthy board right now. And I look at all the players, you know, we've got some folks on it with experience and historical knowledge. But yet we've got some new folks on there with new ideas. And so I'm I'm real happy with that. Chugging right along. Chris is doing a very good job as the as the president. It's it's done a great job.
I hear you, Gene, with Chris.
Yes, sir.
All right. I have no board and commissioners to report on. So go on to board and commission vacancies. Any activity there? Seems like we have a few. We have John Talbot for the Building Code Appeals Board. And let's see, make sure. I guess he's submitted all his paperwork, Tracy, John. And that's that's something that we don't set on. So if somebody wants to make a motion, reappoint him to the Building Code Appeals Board.
Some move.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. And I'll ask for someone to make a recommendation for the fire board.
Yes, Mr. President, I would I would make the recommendation that we appoint William Science as the member from the Peddington Fire Department to sit on the fire board.
Thank you. Have a motion on the floor. We have a second one. Mr. Barnhart, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any other activity on boards and commissioners?
Yes, sir. The Eastern Panhandle Home Consortium, Mr. Deborah Hammond.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Patrick Henry to the Senior Services Board.
We have a motion on the floor in a second. Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. All right. And then we also have a letter of resignation in our package received from Lindsey Hash for the Criminal Justice Board effective November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
No, to accept that.
All right, have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Is that, is that a, is that a required seat?
She's actually representing, representing the press committee.
Right.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Any other activity on boards and commissioners?
Yes, sir. I'd like to, I'd like to bring Mr. Howard, Matthew Howard
Okay.
in for landmarks.
All right, Penny, set that up, please. All right. Next on our agenda is Deb Nichols, Berka County Emergency Ambulance Authority, exoneration for the month of October. Good morning, Deb. Doing well. Looks like you got eighty-three.
Yes. Actually, these are the vacation properties.
Right.
Exonerate and only once a year.
Well, and the good thing is we only exonerate one vacation property now. Somebody has two, right?
Right. They have ten properties and they can exonerate one. Used to be they exonerate mine.
Right, right. All right. Any questions or concerns for Deb for the exoneration? If not, entertain a motion to accept the eighty-three exoneration from the Ambulance Authority for the month of Octo- October.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. All right. Right on schedule. Next on our agenda is Randall Reed Smith, curator for W, West Virginia Department of Arts and Cultural History for the two hundred and fiftieth commemoration. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President. How are you?
Doing well.
Councilpersons, not council commissioners.
Right.
First of all, greetings from the governor. He sent me up here to bring some things to you all. First of all, let's do a proclamation for your two hundred and fiftieth, of which I have copies for each of you.
Matt's right there to give you a hand.
And Randall, you want to read that proclamation for us?
Yes, sir. I tell you, you're better than any opera prompter I ever had when I sang in Europe.
Thank you so much.
You don't want me to sing, I can tell you that.
So State of West Virginia Jim Justice Governor. Whereas on July twenty-second, eighteen sixty-three, Governor Francis H. Pierpont did certify Berkeley County's vote in favor of becoming part of West Virginia on May twenty-eighth, eighteen sixty-three. And whereas on August fifth, eighteen sixty-three, the West Virginia legislature at its first session passed an act admitting the county of Berkeley into and making the same part of this state. Whereas by its admission, Berkeley County became West Virginia's second oldest county, having been created on May fifteenth, seventeen seventy-two. And whereas Berkeley County's first colonial settlement dates to the early seventeen hundreds with the arrival of Morgan Morgan, who is regarded as the earliest settler in what is now the Mountain State. Now therefore I, Jim Justice, Governor of the great state of West Virginia, do hereby bestow upon Berkeley County this certificate of recognition given under my hand and the great seal of the state of West Virginia, the seventeenth day of November in the year of our Lord, twenty twenty-one. Jim Justice, Governor.
Very well done.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you.
And to that, Matthew called me up here to see how we could help out with your celebration. And as you all know, one of the things I do is we have the museums, the West Virginia State Museums, and they're getting ready to do an exhibit because you all have some of the most incredible treasures, not only in West Virginia, but in the entire country of our country's history. And the governor wanted to help out with the exhibit. And I know that Craig P. Blair gave six thousand dollars to the twelve thousand, and the governor gave the other six. And I have that here with me. Is there anybody here from the library, Matt? I'll give you the money, darling. And it's the real thing. It's not a fake check. So there you go. Matt, you want to picture?
Real thing, picture.
Okay, great. And I got a little letter from the governor. May I read that, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, dear. Congratulations. Okay, this is actually to Matt. As Governor, I appreciate all that Berkeley County Two Hundred and Fiftieth Commemoration Steering Committee has done for the great state of West Virginia. Please find enclosed a check in the amount of six thousand dollars to be used for the benefit of the Two Hundred and Fiftieth Commemoration Exhibit to be located in the Martinsburg Public Library. This exhibit will help tell the captivating story of Berkeley County and its rich history. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact my office. That means all me. I wish you the best and look forward to seeing the great success of the exhibit. Sincerely, Jim Justice, Governor. I'll give that to you, Matt. So I mean, I just started my seventeenth year, and I've been able to do a lot of wonderful things in the state. And Berkeley County, especially Martinsburg, holds very many special memories. This building alone has a very special memory to me because when I became commissioner of the then Division of Culture and History, which I affectionately always refer to as the Division of Culture and Hysteria, if you deal with historians and artists. But we did a thing called the West Virginia Biennial Exhibit. It was always held in Charleston, always, because some people down there think that's just the only place in the state.
Right.
And being somebody from Campbell County, you know, to us, Putnam County might as well be the size of the Atlantic Ocean, separating us by Kanona. So I started to travel the exhibit, which the artists got in an uproar. And I went to Parkersburg, Huntington, Wheeling, and I always wanted to come to the Eastern Panhandle. And I'm on the Records Management Preservation Board. I chair that. And Kenny LaMester was our sheriff on there. And Kenny said, I said, I want to do something in the Eastern Panhandle. They told me I could never do it in the Eastern Panhandle. Isn't that a bunch of bull? And and they said there wasn't a place big enough. And Kenny told me about the Dunn Building. And in two thousand thirteen, we held the West Virginia jury exhibition here. It's a biennial exhibit every other year. And they said the artists would never come out from the state of West Virginia. We had over three hundred people at the debut here. And I really want to say thank you all for letting us do that exhibit here and thank you for not charging us rent. Okay. And I brought you all some things because, as you may know, part of the duties that I have, the all the state museums, all the archives. I'm the State Historic Preservation Officer. That's a scary thing. And then I also have all the arts. Now I have all the libraries. I have public broadcasting and volunteer services. But we do a thing called the Historic Markers. And so we just updated the Historic Marker books. And I brought each of you one because I need you all to be my ambassadors in Berkeley County. If you see one that needs to be replaced or damaged, I want you to let me know, okay? I brought each of your book.
All right. Good.
And they're all by alphabetical order, if I can.
Because I think we're being told that the markers are very tough to get replaced because they get
No, no, I had, I had money for it.
Okay.
All you got to know is Randall Reed Smith, three oh four, three eight two, three nine six nine. That's my cell phone.
We got it.
So we actually had a conversation.
I talked with you?
No, not us.
I was gonna say, if I mentioned, it was last year, that was nice. It's a fifty-fifty chance. There you go.
Thank you. We we aboard. The CVB had a conversation about these markers our last meeting. And I asked them, on the five hundred block of of South Queen, there is a Bell Boyd sign up there that one side of it about when she was, when she shot a union officer.
Okay.
One side of it is totally gone.
Okay, well, is it one of our markers? They sort, let's just, you know, let's just
It's not one of these, but
Well, then I can't do anything about that.
It is a marker that's put up there. And they said, nobody knows who has it.
Can it be replaced with one of yours?
Yes, but here's the way the money works. The Historic Society has to sponsor it, and they're about two thousand dollars. If anything ever happens after that, then I can always, I have money to take care of it.
Okay.
But it would be good, because you know, Bell Boyd's famous.
Right.
You know, and it would be good to, because I was just going down to the high school to see a good friend of mine, some music teacher there. And I saw the sign, I know what you're talking about. And you should get one of these.
Yeah.
And that runs through us. And if you just call me, we'll just, because then it goes through the archives and history commission. And it'd be great to get something up.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a history marker, but it's not, I mean, it's not
Can we go over and look at that?
Yes.
You know what I'm talking about, Matt?
But I guess, and maybe you've already answered this question, if if the sign got put up and got paid for.
Then we would always take care of it in case somebody stole it or, you know, and Then we would always take care of it in case somebody stole it, or, you know, and the new signs are great because they're more of an aluminum finish, and that would be good. And I, but if you see anything that's not where it should be, now, call me because they may already be being fixed, but it would be great. I gave Matt a book, and, and I've got all my kids down at Muslman High School in the band looking for him too, so.
Okay.
All right.
As a class project, remember when I was in junior high?
I call them junior highs too. They call them middle schools now.
We're starting to date ourselves, aren't we?
Well, all right. Well, anyway, when I was in school, one of our teachers, for extra credit, allowed us, if we went out and we wrote the historic marker, we got five points added on to the end of our, for every marker that we wrote.
So I bet you wrote ten just to pass, right?
I did. I mean, I squealed by with a D-plus now.
So let me tell you another thing about my favorite, favorite thing about Berkeley County. We are the, I'm the State Historic Preservation Officer, so we do all of the, the listings on the register, the National Register of Restored Places. Do you know which county has the most listings on the register with over a hundred?
Berkeley County.
Berkeley County. So this is everything by county and alphabetical order. I brought you all some of those.
Now, let me ask you something kind of offbeat just a little bit.
That's not surprising, come to me.
I know. I always need help, all right? So.
Thank you.
One of the things that we, one of the things that we have going on is we have a, a Norwalk Foundation that has the.
Oh, the car.
The Norwalk car left.
Oh, yeah. Craig P. Blair's told me about it.
Right?
Yeah.
And they, they're, they would love to find a place to bring that back home, because right now, it's not in West Virginia, sad to say, it's in Maryland.
They've contacted us. I mean, I don't know where we would put it, because it's, you know, it's pretty big.
Yeah, but I mean, is there, is there some additional funding to help, help with some grants to do a museum?
So, sorry.
The problem about, the problem about it is you can, you can do a museum, it's the, the O and E to, to own that, I should say, to, to keep it up, you know?
If you can build a museum, and then at that point, we have funds that we can help you sustain that. But how do you, Berkeley County, you all got all the money in the state.
That's what everybody thinks. But we're not, we're the twenty-first.
It's not what I think, it's what I know.
We're the twenty-first, no, let me, let me say something. I'll tell you like we told the governor. Back then when we met the governor.
Be nice to my governor. He's my third governor, fourth county's party change, and he's doing my best.
He's given us more time than anybody else.
He's great.
Right? So, but when he was here about a year and a half ago, we're the tenth poorest county per capita in the state.
Hmm.
There's fifty, forty-five other counties that's better than us.
Well, then you better work a little harder.
Now, now we're twenty-first. No, you know what?
We did, we got the twenty-first, but we're still about the middle.
We got you and the governor believing we're the richest county in the whole state, and we're not. We just do better with what we have. All right?
Now you're starting to talk like men. You know what Craig P. Blair says, you give that Randall a dollar and he'll get five out of it somehow.
Okay, well, we're trying to get that five dollars out of you right now.
Okay. Well.
Now, speaking of the Norwalk, I did attend their fundraiser.
I know you did.
That they had a great turnout.
They do every year.
Craig, Craig has talked to me about this several times, so.
So if we was to be able to find a way to do a historical museum, not just for the car, but for all the history in, in Berka County, can you support that like you do Tamarack?
I don't support Tamarack.
Okay. How's that get support?
Would you mind if I just made one quick call to some of them? Hey, Siri, call Jenna Green on speaker. I think that you can actually apply for money to purchase a building.
Okay.
Through the Culture Facilities. Sorry to interrupt you all back there.
This is very important to folks, okay, so.
Yeah, at least, at least I'm entertaining.
Oh, you are.
And I haven't even sung yet.
We need to get Norwalk in here too.
No, no, but they've been after us for quite a while.
Hello, Commissioner.
Hello there, Jenna, how are you? I'm sorry to bother you, I'm up here with the, I call them a county commissioner, but they're actually county councils in Berkeley County.
She's on speaker.
Okay.
She is on, and you're on speaker. Oh, you'll love her. Her husband's the head of Americans for Prosperity, Jason Hunter, we love him.
Okay.
So listen, correct me if I'm wrong, the Culture Facilities, if they want to start a museum, they can apply for money to buy a building, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, I'll tell them all, everything, because April first is the deadline.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'm sorry to bother you, okay?
It's okay.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
I don't like to waste time, I'm sorry. So it's called the Culture Facilities Grant. It is lottery funding. It is a fifty-fifty match, so for every one dollar you get from the commission, which is the commission of the arts, then you have to match it with.
So let me ask you this.
I was gonna tell you when the deadline was and how to get it, but that's okay.
It's April, I understand.
April first.
Our grant writers already started.
Well, let me do your.
She's listening to us. Tracy is working on it right now. That's how efficient we are.
How quick was that?
All right, now.
Well, I would like to talk to Tracy to tell her to get it in early, so our staff can look at and say, you might want to think about this, you might want to think about that, and anytime anybody's there, and you know, people won't do that. You tell them how to get it, but then they won't do it. But if you do that, then you have a much better chance. In fact, I know that nobody's ever been refused once we helped them.
Matt, you make sure Randall gets introduced to Tracy right after this, all right?
Yes, I got a question for you.
And I'd like to see her work, since she says she's already working on it.
So, so if, if.
Send her a text, Penny, please, help me out.
If it's a fifty-fifty, if it's a fifty-fifty grant, if, if the, if the cost to refit the building is included in the purchase price, will that, will that grant work fifty-fifty on that as well?
Well, here's the thing, you can use in kinds.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I was just translating it to terms that I understand.
Okay.
I was an opera singer. If it doesn't have five lines and a treble clef, I don't understand.
Oh, yeah, I don't.
Okay.
Well, you're gonna form first before you leave.
I sing solo.
You think?
You can't afford it. As I told Joe Manchin, there's two things that I sing for, money and mother, and neither are here today.
We're just applying for a grant, we want to see how efficient you are. Are we gonna get the grant before you leave? You gonna sing a song?
All right, well, here's the thing, I just brought Matt money, so, and I just talked to him last night.
We don't want Matt to say. All right, so, so, all right, so just imagine this, what if, and I'm speaking out of turn, because I'm not part of this, the, I'm not the, the member on the Roundhouse Authority, but just think if a possibility that the, maybe the second floor of the bridge shop could be a historical museum.
Well, you've already got it, then we can.
And one of the richest historical places in Berkeley County.
So then what, if you already have the facility, then you can apply for money to, for the exhibits and, you know, for that type of stuff.
All right, and then you said you actually are in charge, or you are, can help us maintain it if we.
Yeah, I mean, every year, April first, we have about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to give away. You can apply for. The gosh, worst thing, politicians. So just to think, I was in, I taught, when I came home from Europe, I taught at the University of Michigan, I got out of it because academia was too political, so I'm in politics. So here, so, but now, listen to me. So you can apply up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars over like a three to five-year period. But you, and you have to match all of it.
Okay.
You cannot use state, other state funds to match it. But you can use county funds.
Or it could be fundraisers like the Norwalk does.
Oh, yeah, you just have to match it, and in kinds do count. But if you already have the building, you just, they love your repurpose, and what, and I'm on the Commission of the Arts, what they do love to do, you get your foot in the door, they love to fund project over, project, and I would love to see something like that up here, that we could use space to do more things statewide.
Well, you've already said we're the richest historical county in the state of West Virginia.
Right there, the book says it. And shame on you. That was on my bucket list to come and talk to you about.
I'm working a deal right now, Randall.
So there you go.
So, so the, if it's to purchase a building, does that include to build a building?
Yes, she just said so. We verified it. I can tell he's like the show and you're the life.
No, I'm just figuring out how to make this happen real quick.
Well.
Yeah, I'm the one that sits on the Roundhouse Authority.
Well, I love the Roundhouse, it's good, and then I love also, of course, they house the George Washington Trail thing over there too.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of things, and, and we're, we're getting, we're getting a lot of traction there.
Yes, so you're gonna get more. Hey Elaine, how are you, honey? I'm coming to see you later, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so what we need to do is start focusing on putting the George Washington Trail, which is actually in the, the train station, need to be part of the museum. And, you know, we can't work independently and be able to.
No, we need to work together.
If we work together.
But you know, honey, artists, they never want to work together. It's crazy.
Contractors work together all the time, that's why Dan and I.
And here's what I like about this money, it is economic development, because that money pays for architects and engineers and contractors and construction company. And I like art projects that are economic development.
All right. We'll get started on it real quick.
So you said the money, the batch couldn't come from the state, but it could come from the county.
It can't come from other state funds.
Okay, so we can, we can get the city to help too.
As long as it's not state money. What else do you have? Honey, I'm a genie in a bottle, you get to rub the lamp three times, that's one.
All right, keep on going. I already told you, when you're talking about your singing ability, you need to sing a song, or at least a portion of, 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 a part of a song.
There's a land of rolling mountains, where the sky is blue above, and wherever I roam, I'll hurry home to the friendly hills I love. Oh, the West Virginia hills, how majestic and how grand, with their suburbs bathing glory like our Prince Emmanuel's land. Is there any wonder then that my heart with rapture thrills as I stand once more with loved ones in those West Virginia hills? Oh, the hills, beautiful hills, how I love those West Virginia hills. If for sea oil and I roam, still I'll think of happy home and my friends among those West Virginia hills. 'Tis a gift to be simple, 'tis a gift to be kind, 'tis a gift to, ah, forgot it, 'tis a gift to be simple, 'tis a gift to be kind, 'tis a gift, forget that one, almost heaven. West Virginia, Blue Ridge Mountains, Shenandoah River, life is old there, older than the trees, younger than the mountains, glowing like a breeze, country roads. Take me home to the place I belong, West Virginia, mountain mama, take me home, country roads. Down the road there from me stands an old holler tree where you lay down a dollar or two. You go round the bend and you come back again for that good old mountain dew. Well, they call it that good old mountain dew, 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 and in that refuse it are few. I'll shut up my mug if you fill up my jug with that good old mountain dew. It's West Virginia, it's West Virginia, the pride of every mountaineer. Come on, you old grads, show them with this young lads, oh, West Virginia, now it's, rah, rah, now is the time, boys, to make a big noise, no matter what the people say, for it is not to fear, the gangs are here, so hail to West Virginia, hail. We are the sons of Marshall, sons of the mighty John Marshall. Year after year we go to Marshall U, cheering for our team and gaining all each too. Proudly we bear our colors, love and loyalty our pledge. So from far and near you'll always hear the wearing of the green, but it's the green and white, but it's the green and white, but it's the green and white of Marshall U. Oh, Shenandoah, I long to see you, hi-ho, you lonesome river. Oh, Shenandoah, I long to hear you, hi-ho, I'm bound away to my home beyond the mountains. Oh, the West Virginia hills, I must bid you nala due. To my home beyond the mountains, I shall always think of you in the evening time of life, if my father only wills. I will stand once more with loved ones in those West Virginia hills. Oh, the hills, beautiful hills, how I love those West Virginia, West Virginia hills. If for sea oil and I roam, still I'll think of happy home and my friends among those West Virginia hills. There you go. I'm gonna get back to business.
Well, I'm making progress. So I got my two wishes.
Okay.
My third wish that you can have time to do is get us, help us get.
Oh, I would love to. Because you know, the one at the state, there were five people before me who couldn't do it. And so Joe Manchin gave me six months to raise ten point one million dollars, or it was going to become offices. So I raised eleven, and he said everything I saved, I got to keep. Now, have you all ever known a state project to come in on time or stay on budget?
Not a state project, but county budgets all the time. Ask Matt.
So mine came in six weeks early and three point four million dollars under, and Joe tried to take the money back from me. No, no, no. I used all that for education.
Well, let you keep it if you raised eleven million dollars for us.
Well, I'm not gonna raise the money for you, I might just help you.
Okay.
Okay, what else do we need to know?
You've done a superb job.
So I'm from Barbersville.
Okay.
And Campbell-Midland High School is now my high school, because Barbersville doesn't exist, and I want to go run to Trent Sherman and ask him to just beat the poopy-doo out of Spring Valley on Friday, because we will never hear the end of it, because they beat you all twice.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay?
Gotta get Brent going.
Oh, Brent's great, and Dave Walker's wonderful. That's, now that is a, a West Virginia treasure.
Oh, absolutely.
Anything else I can help you all with?
I don't know, but I would like to have IT track and see how many hits we get on our live streaming today.
Oh, Lord, am I, oh, boy.
Oh, yeah, we're streaming live.
You were last streaming, I was, yeah.
And I didn't put on my Sunday, I didn't.
You'll be able to go back and watch it though.
Oh, no, well, I don't have time for that, I work.
So.
Okay. But we have a whole list of things that we're working on, and you're all looking at Morgan Morgan Park, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I talked to the secretary about that, I mean, I think, we went down to look at it, we want to try to help clean up the monument. My friend Michael Nepper is band director at, at Muslman, we've talked about them doing a community project to clean it up. We went out to look at the cabin, we went to look at the chapel, so we've got a bunch of stuff that we really think we can help you with. All you gotta do is ask.
All right.
But you know the easiest word in English language, right? In any language.
For me, help.
No. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Guys, if you all need to give a, and I'm serious, three zero four, write this down, Dan, this is most important.
All right, go ahead.
Three zero four, three eight two, three nine six nine.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
And we have a birthday party coming up next year. It's gonna be a fan.
And think about bringing an entourage with you, cause I would love that performance. That's what I was thinking too.
But.
But you already said we couldn't afford you.
No, he's already.
Never know.
I don't sing anymore. Those, I'm just a has-been, but that's better than I never was. But, um, we have a list of things and we, we need to try to find time to get the governor up here to have that. But I thought the proclamation was very nice.
Yes, and we're also gonna have a 100th anniversary or birthday party for our airport in 2023.
Oh, she's out there. Nick's great.
Yep, Nick's superb.
Well, of course, he's a southern West Virginia boy. It's all about South of 60, babe.
But we're, 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 we're so lucky to get all this, this experience and knowledge up here.
Who me? No, I have a good staff. Everybody I hire is smarter than me.
That's same way with me.
That's the best way to do it.
Best way to do it.
Best saying is you don't have to be the smartest one. You gotta be smart enough to hire the right people.
You know, I was very fortunate, cause I was breastfed on Mary Kay pink Cadillacs and you can do it enthusiastically. So I'm not afraid to ask anybody for anything, especially if you just wanna help a kid.
Right, exactly.
So, all right. I will let you all get back to business. I'm sure you all got work to do.
Do you, do you want a motion to approve?
Yes, I do want a motion to approve.
What's that?
Adopt the proclamation. Yes.
Motion to adopt.
All right, have a motion on forward. Second, second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Stay appears, the ayes do have it. The ayes do have it. That's what Robert's.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you all.
Yes.
Oh, wait, I've got more bullets for you, buddy.
Take a break. Let me see where we're at. Yep. Okay, all right. Uh, right now, we'll take a break for photos and everything else.
When I was on W R N R, I haven't followed.
So ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, we're back in session. Next on our agenda for Sandy Hamilton will be Jennifer Smith from the Berkeley County Development Authority Resolution Supporting Application for LED Grant Funding. Good morning, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a copy of the resolution. So, I am here. I am not as entertaining.
I was gonna say, it's an entertaining morning, Jennifer.
That's hard to follow, but I am here to get support and a resolution for the Local Economic Development Grant, which is, the purpose of the grant is to increase the capacity for the local economic development to continue to do activities. And one of the requirements is to receive a resolution from the county council. The county council has to designate the BCGA as the applicant, the lead applicant for economic development.
Okay, alright. Anybody have any questions for Jennifer on the resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved, Mr. President.
Actually, adopt or approve? I think it's approval on this one.
Is it approved then?
Are we gonna have her read it?
I was thinking about that, Dan. You think we should?
I think so.
Is that entertaining?
Well, it depends on how she expresses herself.
Hey, let's give her a shot.
Alright, Jennifer, this has been a good day.
Whereas the governing body of Berkeley County is interested in the economic well-being of its citizens. Sorry, I am just getting over a cold as well. And the community at large, and whereas the governing body is prepared to support appropriate efforts within the community to promote economic development, and whereas the governing body of Berkeley County continues to support the Berkeley County Development Authority for their efforts to grow our economy, and whereas the West Virginia Chamber of Commerce and West Virginia Economic Development Council and the Governor's Office of Community and Industrial Development continue to offer financial support that is designed to help West Virginia communities become better prepared for industrial and related economic development. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Berkeley County Council, that our community wishes to participate in the Local Economic Development Grant Program, and that the leadership of this community fully realizes this program requires dedicated effort, and be it further resolved that by receiving these monies that we are pledging our ongoing efforts to support and grow our business community, and be it further resolved that the grant monies require the existence of the Local Economic Development Organization and the Berkeley County Council designates the Berkeley County Development Authority as representing our community for the purpose of participating, participation in this grant program.
Alright, um, thank you for doing that. And there's a reason why I ask people to read these, because I'm not, I don't do it well, at all, so.
You did it much better than he would have.
Absolutely.
It's not anything.
Or me. Much better than I was.
So, appreciate you for doing that, and so, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries, and thank you, and see, we're not that hard. We're pretty easy, alright? Alright, we'll get a sign and get it back to you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next on our agenda, South Berkeley Volunteer Fire Department requests for 24/7 firefighter coverage.
Good morning. So, what I'm here today to do is just present in writing a formal request for paid staffing 24/7 at South Berkeley.
Sir, this is being live video streamed, so could you identify yourself?
I'm sorry. My name is David Simmons. I'm currently the Deputy Chief of South Berkeley Volunteer Fire.
Thank you.
And here representing today, on behalf of our department, for this request again of 24-hour staffing. Everybody knows, I guess, with the growing needs of the community, the amount of calls, and right now we're struggling to get new volunteers, you know, with the lack of incentives or, you know, all the pandemic things going on. People scared to come out. It's really hurting our public. And so, you know, I think today, we've run just over 950 calls for the year. I'm sure that we're probably 20 or 30% higher than that's what we can dispatch to one. And so, that's what I want to come today is prevent this, or present this to you, and see if there's any way in the near future that the county would be entertaining the idea of staffing this department.
But Dave, one of the things I've been, we went around and talked to the fire departments a couple of years ago about 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365-day staffing was to try to get them to understand that it was a, probably at least a three-year process.
Yes, sir.
Right? So, because not only do, in order to do that, we've already said that it's about an $8 million price tag plus or minus, because we haven't fine-tuned it yet, because, you know, the paid staff is county employees. And with that, right now, we're over $2 million in that budget item, currently, the way it stands. So, I guess, one of the things that we have realized is, in order for this to happen, it has to be a joint effort from everyone.
Yes.
And this is the very first step, and I appreciate you and your department doing this. Not that I want it to happen, but it takes a special group of people to say, "I need help." And it's not, that's a good thing.
I know it's a slow process. Right now, I'm currently trying to develop a program for public information recruitment and send volunteers to try to assist, you know, and hopefully that will draw new attraction. But again, formally, I want to request it. I know it's a slow process, but we're anxious to see how the county reacts to this, and welcome any help.
Well, what we, just so you understand what we've been doing too, is we've actually hired two people, Matthew and Christian, on helping us to get word out and educate the public. And we've done that, I guess, Matt has been here for about eight months now, to help with this. So, that's a tool for everyone to use to organize as one, and get that message out. And, you know, we have paid staff in Baker Heights currently. We have, we informally have a request from Back Creek Valley, and that's been a couple of years ago. We're gonna have them to formally do that request.
May of 2018.
Okay, so three years ago, three and a half years ago. So, we're gonna have them to do the formal request and the formal process, just like you did. And then, then what we want to do is come together, right? And the other two volunteer fire departments said, yes, we would greatly accept the help of paid staff, but we all gotta be on the same page.
Yes, sir.
When we go out into the public, we gotta be advocating for the same things.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate your department on knowing what they're doing. Anything else from anybody else?
No, I mean, I think it's important to say that if, if we had the funding enabled to do it and support it, I for one would be on board with doing it immediately. You know, anything we can do to, you know, help the, help the public, especially when it comes to safety, you know, obviously willing to do, but it's all about funding.
Yeah, I think, I think, and Dave, anytime I get the opportunity to speak about the volunteers, it's always in a very, very positive way. A lot of people don't understand what you volunteers sacrifice. You sacrifice a lot of spare time, if you have any. Everyone that is a volunteer works at least one job, if not two, and still finds time to go to the fire hall, keep it clean. You all do a great job on fundraisers, and try to save somebody's lives or their property. And most people don't realize what you all do.
Well, I appreciate your role's recognition. My goal, again, with the public information program I want to do is to help the public's eye on what we actually do, and what we need, and maybe, again, draw some crowd from that. And I'm glad to hear that you have some people working on it as well. Maybe we can collaborate together and share some ideas.
What we need to do, I think the next step is to start to make that part of the fire association's agenda. And we can pull Matt in to assist on that, and start coming up with a plan on how we can educate the public, is what we talk about all the time. Anybody else have anything to add?
No, I think you. Yes, sure I do. Number one, Chief, thanks for coming in. And that's a, that's a tough bite to take out of the apple, to come before us, to ask for 24-hour staffing. I know about pride in front of us, you know, I get it. But I also respect the fact that you recognize the fact that you need help.
Just as we need it.
This community is the fastest-growing community in the state, and one of the top in the whole country. So, the amount of subdivisions that are being built around you, the industry that's being brought in around you, you're going to be challenged much greater in the future. You know, the Fire Board just went through a recruiting retention grant, you know, which I know there were some people came in. Do you have anybody left that is active that came through in that program?
Four to five, maybe.
Four to five.
Because, you know, the things right now, you know, a lot of incentives. I know different areas. I mean, when me and you joined, we had different, different ideas, a different ideal. Today, you know, it's hard to get guys coming down there and volunteering their time for nothing, with no incentives. You know, and, you know, you have pandemics that scare people. You have, you know, again, lifestyle changes. So, a lot of these guys get discouraged. You know, they join six or eight months before a class comes available, then the class takes six to nine months to complete. They're out the door, and it's a revolving door. I mean.
It's a lot of life dedication.
After six o'clock on, throughout the week, in the weekends, do you know what your current scratch rate is? Do you have any idea?
I do not have that information. I would, I would venture to say probably two out of the five calls in an evening would be a scratch rate.
And, you know, I have always been a proponent of immediate response. I think that's critical in not only saving people's lives, but for also the property. So, you know, we will work to try and find this solution, and we'll work together to get there.
Yeah, our biggest problem right now at the nighttime councilman is driving. You know, we might have a few guys there that actively participate, but the lack of training, you know, obviously, and, you know, experience to drive a fire truck. And that's what we suffer with the vehicles. You know, when you take, you know, our demographics of our fire department, you have five, you know, five or six people that has been around forever, multiple different lifestyles, you know, duties or obligations, and it's hard to run 1,000 calls a year with five drivers.
I give you a membership, you know, not only give your membership a lot of credit for taking this next step, because this is about protecting the public.
Yes, sir.
So, I thank you.
I appreciate that.
And the crazy thing about it is, and I've said, Dave, is that we can do this for a cup of coffee a day.
Right.
You know, you can, you can, you know, we can advance the service as a combination fire station, because what works really well is because the paid staff is the ones that get the truck out the door. The volunteers now don't have to go to the station. They go to the scene. It seems like it's working really well at Baker Heights, so, yeah, it's a, it's a big challenge. It's a long haul. But I'm like Councilman Goguenar, I think, you know, if we all work together, we can get it done.
And we've been very.
That's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take everybody working together.
Yeah, and right now, what's really helping our citizens of South Berkeley is we've been fortunate enough to have the Air National Guard and also their staff stations for assistance. You know, and a lot of times, that's what's safe.
Right.
You know, we're at Baker Heights with their 24/7 staff coming to help us out as well. So, you know, again, we'll be requesting help that you guys can give us in the future, and many educations you can help with the public. Great, greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
Would you guys like this letter, or do you have it?
We, we have, yeah, we have.
Alright, well, thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Alright, we do have the chief and director, Mr. Lilly, in here. I think, you know, this is, this is something from South Berkeley Fire Hall, and I know you all are supportive of this. So, if you want to come up, Chief, I see you moving around, if not, understand this is more of a South Berkeley issue, but.
Yeah, I just would like to echo these guys.
Come on up to the podium, please.
I've been in communication with Chief Presley and Deputy Chief Simmons, and telling them that, you know, I had, you know, we're supporting them, and they're doing the right thing. And, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, our citizens of Berkeley County has to come first. You know, and just the same as Councilman Goguenar, I could, you know, taking that bite out of the apple. I took that bite several years ago, and I understand, but every day, when you go to make a decision, you have to put the citizens of this county first. And they are doing so, and I support them, and I'm on board with anything to educate the public, however we need to, whatever avenue we decide to go down. 100% support for me and my standards.
And to ask you something that doesn't pate to your position as chief here, but it appears, and I've heard, that it's worked really, really well at Baker Heights.
It has. It brought, it brought some, as Deputy Chief Simmons was speaking, you know, they do have some younger guys up there, and it takes time to know that toolbox, the engine, squad, tanker. It takes time to understand those pieces of equipment. You just can't put anybody in behind the wheel. And some of what it's done at Baker Heights is it brought some of those younger guys back, because they know the fire truck was going out the doors immediately. There was meals being made there. Where can you go get a $5 meal anymore? Get a $5 lunch, or whatever. And those guys started buying into that. And it turned us, it turned us around. Now, there's days that there's only those three paid guys there. I'm not gonna say that I have, there's abundance of volunteers in there, but also what you echoed, you know, the guys showing up, have the gear with them, the engine's going to the fire, these guys are showing up. You know, we have, it's allowing us some extra manpower.
Yeah, alright.
So, I think we're, I think we're on the, on the right track. I just think we have to get everybody on board, and all of us speaking the same language, and let's move forward.
I agree. I can't, I really can't believe that there's not an outcry from our community to solve this problem. Because you have, you have over half of your fire departments now that are requesting help, and the funding that, that is, is out there isn't adequate to supply that. I can't believe that there's not an outcry from our community to, to get this on a ballot.
I had an argument with my wife's granddaughter, who is a paramedic in Jefferson County, about fire service in Berka County, and she did not know that we have paid firefighters on staff in Berka County. Did not know that.
There's enormous amount of people that don't even know that the, the, the large majority of fire service is volunteer.
Yep. That, you're correct. You know, the education that it needs to, it needs to, you know, and hopefully with Matt, his assistant, you know, we can get more of this out there to the public. You know, basically, the fire service is like your insurance policy. It's, it's there when you need it, but you don't think about it until you need it.
Right.
And that's, that's kind of, you know, so we need to educate them about us as the insurance policy that truly, you know, they need us a lot more, you know.
Sounds like the group of people last night in Shepherdstown at an event. And then we went to King's Pizza at 10 o'clock at night to get something to eat. And the volunteer siren went off at the fire department, and they said, "What's that?" They said, "It's a call for help for the volunteers. There's, there's, you know, a fire or an accident." Really? You know, that's how they do it? I said, "Well, they, you know, we have radio, we have central dispatchs, but that's the old style," which your, your fire department, Deputy Chief Simmons and Chief Presley, has one of those, right? And, and, and we have Summer back there that fought very aggressively to make this first step, to be able to get the funding that we need. And so, we're all on the right track. And, and as, as we talked earlier, it's a long drug-out process, and then it's all got to do with timing.
Yeah.
You know, when it has to be approved, your public hearings, getting on the ballot. It's already too late to put it on, on the ballot for, for the spring. So, we're, if any time, we're looking at general election at the earliest, and it may be too late for that.
Well, you gotta have everybody on board. That's.
That's what I mean.
You know, I, you know, we'll go into, you know, Tuesday, we have a structured fire Tuesday afternoon. We have a structured fire off of a score of points. As Councilman Goguenar alluded to, you know, being able to get that initial response, we had it. What bothers me as the chief of Berkeley Fire is my four other stations after 6:00 PM. And that's no reflection on the volunteers whatsoever, but that immediate response, you know, 2:00 AM in the morning, you know, and somebody finally sees something, you know, or, you know, they're awakened by their alarm system, smoke detectors, what have you. And, you know, we're behind the eight ball of getting on the road and getting, getting there to be able to save somebody's life or property. That, that concerns me very deeply.
Yeah. Fires are, I mean, it's, it's tragedy. It really is. I mean, everybody, you know, and not everybody, most people have, the biggest investment is their home, and they have everything they own there, you know, plus, plus their family, which can't be replaced, you know. I had, I was in a fire when I was very little, and my younger brother died in that fire. And, you know, to, to think that, that we don't have an outcry from the community, that, that we need to solve this problem is just amazing to me.
Well, thank you, Chief.
Yes.
We'll, we'll start working. Deputy Chief Simmons, if you would help us to try to get things organized with the fire association, and we'll get Matt ready to go and see if we can't get started on some of this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Chief Presley, it's good to see you, buddy. Alright, any other statements? Alright, next on our agenda is Summer Barrett, a mega contract renewal. Now, Ms. Barrett, you. Now, Ms. Barrett, you, you wasn't here earlier, but we had a really good representative from the governor's office to do a great presentation, no pressure, all right, but sung some opera for us and everything.
Opera?
Yes.
Look, you'll have to look at the live stream, he was like, he was like.
There will be no opera here. I can guarantee.
He was like, almost five minutes.
No opera, just the mellow drum.
And it was like, you couldn't afford, you can't afford me to sing opera, but, and then once we got him started, it was a good show.
He didn't stop, he just kept on going.
Yeah, it's been a good morning, so.
Well, I'll be, I will probably disappoint you, because I, I will not be singing.
Well.
That's not my strong suit.
Just brief us briefly, we got a, a nice explanation of what happened over the last year and continues to happen and, and all that stuff. But give us a, a just, a small highlight of what your, the accomplishments have been, what your relationship has been, and what the future may hold for Berkeley County if we renew this contract.
Okay, well, I think all of you know I'm Summer and Daniel Hall.
Daniel, good to see you again.
Works with Omega, too. And so he was very helpful and instrumental at the Capitol over the last year. I think, you know, you mentioned, I think everyone received the report that we prepared. I guess the, several of the key accomplishments were the three bills that we were able to advocate for and were passed and signed into law. And then we, we got a few others halfway across the line or almost there. So we can obviously circle back in the next session for those. I think it was a really successful first year. And I think both Daniel and I really enjoyed advocating on behalf of the county. I don't know how detailed you want me to go into those bills, but I can list them.
Just tell us, just tell us a little bit, one of the bills would be the tipping fee bill. Just, I'm, I'm doing my math here now.
Okay.
So if you highlight that, I'll give you the number here in a couple of minutes.
So that, the tipping fees bill was a bill that had been introduced several times before, but never quite made it over the finish line. So we worked and, and kind of had to, at one point, work out a compromise, because there were some smaller counties that weren't, weren't quite on board with the breaking it down by population. So we were successful in negotiating a compromise that would have the first 25% of those tipping fees sent evenly across all the counties, and then the remaining 75% to be distributed on a per capita basis, which really helps counties like Berkeley County that are seeing a lot of growth.
And that was a tough sell.
It was, it was, because really, you know, there are, most of the counties in West Virginia are not seeing growth like Berkeley County is. There are a handful, but overall, you know, they're declining or they already have a very small population. And the, and the people that represent those counties obviously have a job to do, and they have to advocate for their. Yeah.
And we have a very productive, solid waste authority.
Yeah.
That gets recognized almost annually for their accomplishments.
Yeah, and I, like, I know Clint Hogman has worked really hard on this in, in prior sessions and.
And I was there at the last prior, prior session and tried to help, too.
Yeah.
Got a lot of pushback from the DEB.
Yes, yes. So there were definitely some hurdles that we had to get through, but thankfully, we got it done. And I think the really important part is the estimated annual disbursements for Berkeley County. So in that first, in the first year in 2022, the estimate would be approximately $24,150. And then it just goes up from there in 2023, $48,300, 2024, $72,450, 2025, $96,600, and then in 2026, $120,751.
And that total is $362,252, and then after year five, it becomes $120,751.37.
Right.
More than likely.
Yeah, and then based on population, it'll continue to rise from there.
And I think the population of the state of West Virginia is going to come back. There's a lot of, the secret's out, we're a great place to live.
Yeah, and, and will obviously likely continue to grow here in Berkeley County as well.
But all, all the state of West Virginia, I think you'll find the quality of life.
Definitely.
And the reputation that people falsely put out there about West Virginia, they're finding out isn't the truth.
Right. And then, as you kind of mentioned during the previous presentation, one of the bills that honestly was a very big fight, but it really will benefit our area and, and really, any county that decides to do a paid fire force. It was certainly a battle almost every day of session, but it really was just an education issue. A lot of people didn't understand our scenario, and they didn't understand that our, you know, firefighters were, were on board with the overall concept. So it took a lot of educating members that, that really didn't understand, because they don't live in an area like Berkeley County that has a paid staff.
And the reason why it was such a hard sell was because most counties don't have the volume of calls that we have.
Right, and they're, they're not seeing the, the problems that we are.
But the crazy thing, as Councilperson Gokenar will tell you, how many, how many counties have called you and talked to you about how we do it now?
Probably five or two.
Yeah, so, so there's, there's five other counties that want to know how's Berkeley County gotten into combination stations. So we're, we're just, we're just leading the way.
Right, right, and the, and the more educating we do like that, more, the more counties will probably say, oh, that's a great idea, we should look into that.
Right, and it's all, now it's all about, as we said, educating the people, the public, right? But, but it, and the old, the old way would have been to get a petition signed, it had to be a third?
Yeah.
No, 10%, 10% of the registered voters.
Yeah.
Or voted, the, the amount of voters voted in the last election, I think it was registered voters.
Registered voters.
Yeah, it was a big number.
Yeah.
So it would have been, you know, I think 8,000 signatures. And to get those signatures and then, and then assure that they are who they are and they are at the address, by the time you got the signature, you go back and somebody probably moved, right?
And who does that? Who, who completes that project?
Right, so it's a very tough. So this way, you, you, you try to get your, your ducks in a row, you try to get it on a referendum, and in one day, you'll know whether you're successful or not.
Right, yeah, and, I mean, as you know, and just for anyone listening, that has to start with the fire board, you know, presenting that request.
Right, right, yeah, and that's what we just started. Or I didn't, we didn't start, they started.
You know, probably 50% of our population in the last 20 years came from another state, and the majority of them have, have full-time firefighters. So those people that have came here, they, they just don't know that we're relying on volunteers, and there's a volunteer issue throughout the whole country.
Yeah, especially those moving in from Northern Virginia and Maryland, they all have.
Yeah. All right. Taxing of the Airbnb's?
So this kind of like, the tipping fees had been a bill that had been introduced several times and a few times passed the legislature and then was vetoed by the governor when it got to him because of some concerns with the tax department. So early on in the process, when we first started last year in December, we sat down with some of the stakeholders to try to figure out what's the problem, why is it being vetoed? And we learned in that process, the concern really lied with the tax department. They didn't want that extra burden of receiving the funds and then dispersing them. So we kind of removed that step in the process and had the funds directly distributed to the counties, which makes it, removes the concerns that the state tax department had. And we were thankfully able to get Senate President Greg Blair on board very early, and he saw that that was one of their top priority bills at the beginning of session. So it passed the Senate really quickly, and then, I think, a couple of weeks later, passed the House. So it was, it, it passed with far greater ease once we removed that one simple, well, it wasn't simple, but one, it's one step in the process that was causing it to be vetoed every time.
Senator Blair, Lieutenant Governor Blair, and our local representatives work really, really hard. It's a tough job.
Yeah.
Sometimes, most times, it would be very unrewarding, but we do appreciate what they do.
Yeah, and they, they really were all very helpful. Anytime I went to them, you know, they got on board and helped us whatever we were advocating for. So we had a great relationship with all of them.
If we renew the contract, which we can do that, Mr. Davis, right?
Yes, sir, that's why it's on your agenda. The current contract expires the end of this month. It was a one-year contract with the option to renew for two out years. So this would actually be the first of the two out years.
So what, if we renewed the contract, what can we expect for next year?
Well, in the packet that I gave you, I mentioned that we started, this is just one thing, we started a weekly reception at our office. I think that's a really important thing that I don't want to go unnoticed, because it's, it's really an opportunity, especially during COVID, COVID times last year, it was very hard to get access to the Capitol and to, to get meetings inside the Capitol. So having that outside the office was really beneficial. We saw probably 30 to 70 members come through on any given week. And that really gives us a chance to get people in a relaxed environment and just kind of talk about legislation and get to know them. So obviously, building upon the relationships that we both already have with the members, we won't have, well, we have a couple of new members with people resigning, but most of the people will be returning, so we have those established relationships. And then I know we have kind of chatted about what bills we look to advocate for in the next session. Obviously, the bills that we got halfway across the line or almost across the finish line, we would, if you all think those are still priorities for the county, we would pick those up. And then, I know the regional jail per diem is a very big issue that we need to address. And we've already started kind of laying the groundwork there. I've had a lot of meetings with several members, but especially the Senate President, he's really committed to seeing that something happens with that. And I think another really important thing that we shouldn't forget is all of the incoming federal infrastructure money. In the last session, the legislature passed a bill that anything over, is it $100 million? Yeah, I think it's $100 million, anything over $100 million that's being, any supplementals, the governor cannot approve those on his own, they have to go through the legislature now. So it's going to be really important for us to advocate, to ensure that we get some of that infrastructure money here in Berkeley County. There, you know, there's a long list of things that we can use that for, roads, bridges, public water, all of those sorts of projects. And we'll have to get, we'll have to convince the legislature that we deserve some of that funding.
Yeah.
So those are a few of the things that we've kind of discussed, or I think were important to mention.
Anybody right now have questions for Summer, what she's talking about? Okay, I, I can say that the little bit of time that I've had to, to work with our state representatives and stuff, it seems like the relationship has improved. Haven't heard anything on the negative side about what we've done and how it's being handled. And me speaking for myself, I, I think it's worked out very well. So I don't know what you all feel, but Daniel, do you have anything you want to add? Or are you comfortable with what Summer said?
My name is Daniel Hall, and I'm with Omega, and it's been a pleasure to work with you all. Summer's done a fabulous job, in my opinion. She's very well respected at the Capitol, works well with everybody there, regardless of party. Because we do have to have the other party, the minority party votes for our stuff, it's important to do that. So, and like she said, the receptions have been great. And when we got, it made the Charleston Gazette newspaper, because it was so big, had 100 and some people there on St. Patrick's Day. But, but those are just great events to, like she said, interact with the legislators in a casual manner. Berkeley County has already, has always been, in my time at the Capitol, been respected and a leader in the state, considered a growth over the last decade or a couple of decades. And now even more so with Summer advocating every day. She does it, and that's one thing that just I wanted to point out, this is not just a lot of job that happens at the Capitol for 60 days. She's on the phone every day, probably most likely seven days a week, maybe she might miss Christmas or something. But, but you're talking to a legislator, because I'm all over the state. So if you're talking to somebody every day and working through, trying to build support, we're grateful for the opportunity to work with you. I think it was a very successful session, and we're continuing that. I think that a lot of the other counties have really paying attention to what you're doing.
Well, Daniel, I'd like to add a little bit, Summer doesn't have set hours neither, because a lot of times at nighttime, I'll get a phone call at 10 o'clock.
That's a fact, that is a fact.
Doug probably got tired of my phone call.
I told my wife, I said, ah, it's Summer again.
I think it's, I think it's important to note that this session, with what was accomplished, obviously exceeded for Berkeley County what the, what the agreement is to, to employ you as a, as a relationship officer, what was the, what was the title that it was?
Legislative.
Leg, huh?
Government Relations.
Government Relations, there you go. I, I think it obviously, and I can see that some of these other, that, that you've got good traction on, I can see those coming in the next year, totally achievable. And again, you'll be able to meet that mark, exceed that mark with what you're doing for Berkeley County. So I, I really appreciate what you've done.
You have a good relationship with the County Commission Association and the Association of Counties, which is strong, because a lot of our issues, if not at least 90% of them, are, are issues throughout the state.
Yeah, they were really, both were really, especially Jennifer Piercy, anytime I needed, a lot of times with our issues, people would say, well, that's just a Berkeley County issue. And the, the other members would be not so inclined to support it or, or get behind it, because they didn't think it impacted their county, or they thought maybe their, their county wouldn't like it. So Jennifer, she, anytime I called her to say, you know, could you touch base with your other members and see how they feel about it, she would, you know, get a letter and sign it, you know, from the association, just to show that it wasn't just a Berkeley County issue, it really could help more than just Berkeley County.
Right, right.
And just to illustrate the attention that you folks are giving in Charleston at your legislative summit on the 9th, you will have Jennifer and Jonathan both in attendance, which I think is probably the first time they've both been together at your legislative summit. So you'll be well represented in Charleston.
Yeah, all right, if we have, don't have any more questions for Nathan or Summer, entertain a motion to renew.
Like the question, terms of the contract the same?
Well, I took it to be the same.
We have, we have no proposed changes.
Okay.
Okay, you're satisfied we are.
Only record.
All right, so entertain a motion to enter into another one-year contract with Omega? Or Mr. Davis?
It will be from, for the period December 1st of 2021 through November 31st of 2022. The total maximum contract amount of $240,000 payable monthly, as $60,000 for services plus applicable expenses. It's understand that expenses may vary from month to month, but shall not exceed $48,000 during the 12-month period. And, and as you can see from your read ahead, I have given you the expenses for the first 11 months, and they are well within motion parameters.
All right, entertain a motion to enter into the contract. Motion been made?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, I agree. I firmly believe that there's not a person that has worked any harder in Charleston than Summer Barrett. She is, she is up on the issues, she has, has done what this council has asked. The only problem that I have with it is, is honestly, at the end of the day, the amount of money being spent. $16,000 a month, it's a tremendous amount of money.
And I look, naturally, we always look at, look at that, but then I also have to look at, anytime you're in business, you got to spend money to make money. And that's why, one of the reasons why I wanted to make it sure, just on one, just on one instance, she's bringing back, or Omega's bringing back $362,252, and back to Berkeley County that was given to somewhere else in the state in a five-year period. That's huge, right, that's just one, that's just one bill.
Not to mention that the next five years is going to be over $600,000.
Absolutely. So I think it's money well spent. As long as we keep seeing results, I don't have a problem with it, so.
Well, I like it because you make it appear, not appear, but emphasize that rest in state, that Berkeley County is a leader, not follow.
Yeah, appreciate it. It's huge.
Well, there's another, there's another part to it as well, you know? Our legislators that are from this area, obviously, they're elected to represent our area, but they have to be fair throughout the whole state. And with, with Summer down there expressing the concerns and why we should be changing these laws and educating all of the others, it helps them understand why our legislators would be approving something and not just doing it just because they're from here.
I think, yeah. It's like the prior county commission president told me, Bill Stubblefield, being in this elected position is one of the best elected positions you could ever be in, right? Because you're, you're all from the same community. You all understand the ins and outs about what you're trying to get approved, right? And it's only affecting your community. I can't imagine being at the state and trying to convince people in other areas of the state of West Virginia that what's, could benefit Berkeley County could one day benefit you. That's a tough sell because they're going to protect what they have all day long and rightfully so. So, all right, any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Rest of the record show that the vote was four to one to extend the contract. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is Will Lawrence. Fiduciary Supervisors Estate Accounts. You have three estate accounts, Will?
That is correct, counsel. These accounts are only being read out of turn chiefly because either through error with the Martinsburg Journal or with our software, these particular three were not published. And by law, prior to the council's approval, these estates must be published for public notice at least ten days prior to their approval. This could have been possible last week, but of course, we were off Veterans Day. So I wanted to get these going as soon as possible. Without further ado, the three estates are as follows for approval. John R. Delridge Jr., Junior Franklin Mills, Sharon Jo. Williams Stefanco.
All right. Entertain a motion for the three estate accounts that Will has presented.
Move to accept.
Have a motion on the floor and have a second. Any discussion?
I think that's the shortest one I've ever.
Well, to, yeah, to follow up.
Yes, counsel. And just as a slight heads up for the month of December. I know you all are incredibly busy and I did listen to your scheduling questions presented by Mr. Davis. The fiduciary supervisor's office is going to try something that has not been done in Berkeley County. It was prior to 2019 not allowable. It hasn't been done by a fiduciary supervisor prior. But quintessentially, what it is, is I am going through estates. The code allows for three years or more without any estate action. I'm going as back as far as eight years, just thinking that is clearly enough time for people to have done things and nothing has happened. With those estates, eight years or further out from their initial qualification, having had no estate action, I am going to submit a list. There's nothing in the code that says I have to read them for you. There are hundreds, if not thousands, so I'm going to spare you that. But just be on the lookout for that. It can only be submitted two times a year, once in July and we miss that deadline, and once in December. It is for ultimate approval in January, but in order for council's approval in January, I have to submit them by end of month, December. So just be on the lookout for that.
And Will, when you said that, talked about that once before, do you think that may trigger people in the future not to settle estates?
I don't believe so, counsel, only from the standpoint that one has to understand that the carrot at the end of the stick of having to deal with my office is settling the estate and ultimately dispersing of probate assets. Before you settle the estate, you have no legal authority to do that. And I think the new legislation allowing for small estates has, you know, greatly.
Small, just small.
Right. And most of what these estates were, there was a bank account. That bank account was of a decedent, that bank account was ultimately emptied to pay for a funeral expense, leaving nothing left for, to be distributed. So what's the point in keeping going with the estate process? That's typically what we're seeing. And that, you know, through the legislature has been a problem that is no longer.
One of the things, the prior, the office and staff, prior to you becoming the director, was great, right? And when you hire new people and new positions and, you know, there's always the fear of the unknown. I would like to say in public that you've done a tremendous job. You're well respected. You appear, and I'm sure that down deep heartily, you love what you do. And it's rewarding because you're helping people.
Sure.
Right? So I just wanted to say in public, it's been an honor for you to be there and to be part of our team and appreciate what you do for Berkeley County.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. Yeah, so just the three this month, but as I say, you're going to be seeing more of me, I fear. Sorry about that.
Hopefully, we'll get that in the read ahead so we can look it over well before we show.
Absolutely.
Well, here, I got a crazy question. Just imagine that.
I can't believe that's coming from you.
Every time we have settlements, we have to make sure that we don't have a settlement in there that we are tied to that person one way or the other. If you bring a thousand or so to us at one time, how in the world are we not going to have to recuse ourselves?
That's why I said we got.
Yeah. I will make sure that the list is submitted. Again, I'll have to go through the code and.
Yeah, but you got to think, I don't care how, I don't care how early you submit it, a thousand names.
Yeah.
Going to affect, well, more than one of us.
Well, you have to be, you have to benefit from it.
Right.
That's what I was.
Yeah, you have to benefit from it, I mean, not.
And, and keep in mind, counsel, by.
I'm not so sure that's how it was in the past. I think part of it was you can benefit from it. But, you know, on the perception could be that you're.
The appearance of.
You're helping someone that you're associated with.
And to clarify the nature of the administrative closing process, this does not void any open claims. That would be on the, on an estate, for instance, if an estate's been open for nine years, there are fourteen claims, they haven't been touched for whatever reason. By administratively closing that estate, it does not void those claims. Those creditors are not out in the cold. The duty still remains on the estate to handle those creditor claims. So in a way, what we're, what we're trying to do is essentially remove the backlog of estates that, you know, realistically probably should have been small estates way back when. The legislature hadn't done any kind of small estates back then. And now we're kind of just, again, removing the backlog. It does not remove any kind of duty upon any personal rep for these estates. They still remain.
So is this something that can be done in the whole month of December?
Well, I can, like I said, we, I submit the list per the code. I submit the list to the council prior to December thirty-first. And with that submission, I then, the following month, ask for approval. Now, that approval can just be a yea or nay vote. It doesn't have to be read aloud.
But, but my, my thought process is, let's say hypothetically, you got a thousand names. Could you, and there's four thirties in the month of January, can you do two hundred and fifty of them?
Sure. Oh, absolutely. Given that this is the first time, I think really, the Eastern Panhandle, no other county has done this either. Because again, it hasn't been available. I would feel very comfortable in minimizing that list to a readable amount.
Well, I'm just thinking because of, for ethical purposes, we could see the less than breaking them apart that we still could be able to vote and get it passed.
That's absolutely understood.
You know, and I'd like to point out that I hope that all the decisions that I help pass here in this helps not only everybody that I know and my family, but everybody else in Berkeley County.
Sure.
So, you know, I don't know that, I believe, and I could be wrong, but I believe that if you're not receiving personal gain from it, that everybody else isn't receiving, that, that you're not in conflict.
Yeah, okay, I agree.
And I would agree with that. I mean, if it's close family members estate, you might need to recuse. Abstain, recuse, but if you're not benefiting or a close family member benefiting.
See, I would, I would think if one of us had a close family member, they would probably have been coming to us anyway to get them closed. So you would think, and that's, you know, that would be my hope, so.
This, I see it more as administrative thing, clears some things up. And this should be the only time that it's this many.
Right.
It's not going to come here next year and it's going to be over a thousand.
And I applaud you, I applaud you for thinking outside the box and trying to do a little bit more. Must have had some spare time there.
Yeah, yeah, but we have, if there's anything the fiduciary has, it's all kinds of free time. We just put all stuff down there.
All right, Will, looking forward to February, probably January, I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely. All right, thank you, counsel.
Yes.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yep, voted and signed. Thank you, you too.
You cooking?
I am.
What time? I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
There's a sun.
All right, let's take a quick break and then come right back. We're moving on. All right, let's take a quick break and then come right back. We're moving on.
Couple of months ago, everybody texted me, hey, what's going on out there?
Your honor.
All right. We're back in session. Next on our agenda is Tracy Gillum, Grant Administrator, Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director, the West Virginia COSSAP Grant Award. You have to tell us what all the letters stand for.
I can tell them.
This is a grant through West Virginia for a Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program grant.
And this is different than
Than the Joe Tip.
A federal Joe Tip, COSAP.
That is funded under COSAP.
Okay.
And the reason I mention that is in your, in your read ahead for your state budget revision, I had put a $50,287 reimbursement from the ASAP grant. But it's not ASAP, it's COSAP. So I just didn't want to make sure that you understand one's a state COSAP and one's a federal COSAP.
Okay, all right. All right, so tell us a little bit about the grant reward, award, not reward, award.
We're applying for $131,282 for 21 months for two peer recovery coaches, and that will offset costs, no new physicians. The match is $54,402.
Okay, all right.
As the council knows, about 95% of the DRC is grant funded, the physicians. This, as I mentioned, is not two additional physicians.
It's the back two.
That 5% that is general fund funded, it's to kind of supplement, supplement that.
Okay, all right, so you're looking for our approval to apply?
There is a resolution for you to.
Okay, you want to read that?
Sure. This is a resolution in support of application to fiscal year 2022 West Virginia Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program, otherwise known as COSAP. Whereas the Berkeley County Council supports the efforts of the Berkeley County Day Report Center to provide comprehensive evidence-based therapies and transitional services for substance abuse offenders. And whereas the Berkeley County Council has made a commitment to provide and support alternative methods for substance abusers. And whereas the Berkeley County Council's grant application requests funding to assist in personnel for the Berkeley Day Report Center overall, therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Council supports the submittal of the A Fiscal Year 2022 West Virginia Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Program COSAP Application to assist in the programmatic support and growth of the Berkeley Day Report Center. Signed this 18th day of November 2021.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
Motion's been made, second, any further discussion on the motion?
Thank you for your sitting.
Thank you, thanks.
That's the least amount of words I've ever heard you say.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
All right, so all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
I just want to commend Tracy and Tim for, I mean, they're constantly out of mind and looking for opportunities like this. You know, sometimes it's hard to keep track of all the grants, but it's just, it's really tremendous what they're doing.
It is.
And what we're doing for a fraction of the general fund cost is amazing.
It's great work. Tim, I want to tell you about a situation last night that is very heart wrenching. And I think I can find a way to contact the person. But last night, the documentary of The First Step was shown down in Shepherdstown, Shepherd University through the Stubbleford Institute. And, you know, at the end of that film, there's a Q and A. And there was a young gentleman that came in from San Diego that took school, that came up and asked for help. He's in recovery, wants to stay in recovery, was on fentanyl, and doesn't know what to do to occupy his time. There's no place around. And I've heard that this conversation, discussion happened, was talked to me not too long ago. Matter of fact, it's your appreciation picnic. Of, there's not a place for people in recovery to go to spend their spare time without involving an alcohol establishment. Very hard to find places. So he was wanting to know what to do with his time. And he did get some people to reach out to him, one here in Berkeley County. And hopefully it will be someone, give me a call later, I'll let you know how to get ahold of them. And maybe we can reach out and talk to him about our recovery services. But for someone to, in that atmosphere, or any atmosphere, to come out and say, I have an addiction problem. I'm in recovery, I want to stay in recovery, but basically saying I'm struggling on any hell. All right, we have, we have taken a vote. Right, Mr. Barhart? Patty, reassure me that we took the vote. Okay, all right, thank you Tracy, thank you all both for everything you do. All right, five minutes early now, so Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator, Reed District. You and we have the county clerk, Ms. Malk here. Ms. Malk, it's always an honor to see you.
I was real excited with Randall Reed today. He's gonna, remember I told you we had a 31 star flag? I think he's gonna get it restored for us.
He, very impressive.
The things that we got him to admit to yet today is about trying to give us some help.
What were you doing with the 31 score?
It was the, it was the World War I flag, we Berkeley County lost 31 soldiers. And it's a special flag that I found. No one even knew what it was, I brought it out, I don't know what it was. And that's, to be able to restore it since we got the red flag on, it's great.
Great.
And we can put it up in the gun building here eventually, we can get cleaned up and case.
All right, Mr. Wine, how you doing today?
I'm having the time of my life.
You sound a little drowsy.
No, I had my last paint job, well within the limits.
I do want to tell Gary, I did give you, Rob Marri, or gave Rob your name about this redistricting. And if you, if you've got time on my next WRNR visit, if you want to come out with me, we can, we'll probably ask some questions about it.
We can, well, he called me and asked me to be there tomorrow morning at 8:35.
Ben, I don't have to be there for that one, okay?
Come on.
Well, I could, but I.
Feel free.
Okay.
8:35 tomorrow.
It was pre-surgery, I'm pretty sure that's what he asked. So here we go.
He should have asked you a lot more.
I said, pre-surgery, post-surgery would have been correct. Right, so as you know, and everybody was here the last time it is mine, Eddie, Eddie was part of the team, he just wasn't behind the bench. But we go through this gyration every 10 years. It's followed, it follows the census efforts. As you know, the state has done their part. Now it's our turn, your turn, excuse me. So I'm just going to review a couple of things that we've done, and then I'll throw some pictures up on the screen. Glad to answer any questions. As you know, our population in 2010 was 104,119. In 2020, it was 122,075. So about 17,900, almost 18,000 people. And we're tasked, the clerk is tasked to present to you, and there's lots of rules, all comes down from the legislature through the Secretary of State's office, to equally divide your magisterial districts. As you know, you have six. Recently, we had a discussion, or you had a discussion, on, you know, where you're going to stay, what you want to do, or any changes. The, the decision of the board was to stay at six magisterial districts. So that's the numbers that we've worked. One of the things that we have done, as you well know, being a growth county, that our population changes faster than, it seems like it's daily. So we went to planning, and we asked the planning department if they could give us, not an inflated number, but a good solid number of open parcels that are in fully viable functional subdivisions. So we could apply the national average of humans that are going to fill those parcels well before the next 10 years. So we asked for three to five, be conservative to three. In that, there are 5,680 parcels today that are in active, growing, changing subdivisions. The, the census provides what they call, oh, it's on your conference room, man, I agree with you.
You want me to help you?
Thank you, sir.
He won't accept my help when I offer, that's terrible.
So the census, this is their data. They say in, in, in all households, it's two and a half per house, and in family, it's 3.2. We did an inflate, we used the 2.5 number. We could have used the other number and had it bigger, but we have about 14,200 people that we know your planning department is very confident are going to be on the books before 2030. So the number we used was the 122,075 plus 14,200.
That's people.
That's people. And that's what you have to evenly divide.
Divided by 2.5.
No, it's 5,680 buildable
Okay.
Times 2.5 to give you 14,200 people that we know are going to come on.
And currently, right now, we're doing 1,300 new addresses a year.
Like I say, we could have easily done the three. And, but pretty much guaranteeing, and I'm talking three to five years. We won't redistrict.
Right, but ten, you're not counting about the city.
You, we're not.
Yeah.
We're not, because we don't have any.
Are these divided throughout the county in a certain manner?
And I'm going to, I'm going to show you that, yes, sir.
They're trying to even out, right?
We, your task to do that, your task to do that, the Secretary of State has a whole website that defines exactly what we're supposed to do, and Mr. Barnett, to show you what it looks like. See all of these, see all of the lines, those aren't roads. Those are census blocks. Like, for instance, everywhere you see a separation, that's what they call a census block. And inside those blocks are population counts. You don't know what house they're in, and you can see, depending on how rural it is and how urban it is, the blocks get bigger and smaller, and the numbers in the blocks get bigger and smaller.
Is this a map that we can access?
Sure, sure, as soon as, as soon as the body blesses this process, this will hit the internet and the web before day end.
So we have to go through a public hearing process.
On June the 6th.
Not June 6th, January 6th.
No, ma'am, it's December, any, 9th?
December 9th.
Yeah, December 9th. So this is just for process of moving forward. There'll actually be a public hearing or a hearing on December the 9th, and that's all, you have that in your read ahead to sign.
But between now and then, we have to publicize all this and solicit input.
Right, and you have to actually, your task, or the clerk is tasked to post it inside the magisterial district. So Nathan's next effort will be to find where it ends or school, anywhere that you can outpost these things with this announcement that you're, on December the 9th, you're going to do the formal process of adopting. And between that, you may ask for changes from us. We'll do whatever the body asks. But for now, we're drawn, and I'm going to show you an iteration of where it is drawn and how it's drawn. Just some idea of what it looks like. This is your current magisterial districts, and it's, I'm going to blow them up and show them to you one at a time. So as you can see, there's Potomac. I don't know if it's big enough for you to read the numbers, but
Yeah, we can.
Okay, so 18th, in Potomac, you can see the mass, how big it is. It goes clear over into Hedgesville, close to Route 9. It had 18,000 people, in 2020, it's got 23,000, with an expected growth of 5,000 and change.
And this is current?
This is, this is not current drawing, these are current numbers. I'm going to show you, this is our existing.
This is existing magisterial district.
Basically, we'll show you how unbalanced that is.
Exactly, that's right. So if we go, if we come down to Tuscarora, you know, it's
So the, okay.
Go ahead.
So no, the 2010 population, nevermind.
Yeah, I just wanted you to see the change.
But the 2020, not only, is, is the 2020 the actual population, and then you got to add the expected growth to?
Exactly right, okay. So to prove my point, look at this, look at the size of Potomac.
Right.
It has 23,500 in that current, as it's drawn today, it has 23,500 in it. We have to add 5,700 to it, so it will be at 29,000 people if we left it drawn as is.
Right.
And this drawing is to show you case in point that you have to mobilize. It's not balanced.
What does it say, a census, when it was, when it was platted out several years ago, it had what, 18 in?
Yeah, so when this, when that brown was drawn, that's Potomac, it had 18,055 in 2010.
Gotcha.
And that was evenly divided, if we're going through this same gyration.
So now the figures are 10,000 more?
They are.
So, so, and to, here, before long, there'll be an expected growth of 50% just in Potomac District alone.
Exactly right. And I'm going to show you a couple of maps with, with highlights of the growing subdivisions, that you'll see then. Tuscarora, you know, went from 16 to 19, and we've got 3,400 as growth. Adam Steven, which is the city, we don't have their growth, they were at 17,2, they went to 18,7. Shannon Dowa was at 16,8, they're at 18,8, with 3,000 extra to grow. Norborn, 16,8 to 19,2, and in the Valley, 19 to 22, with 1,600 projected. And that, what that looks like, this is the map with the population with its growth. And those red dots represent viable functional subdivisions. So when planning gave us these projected numbers, you're looking at them, and that's where they are. You can see, we'll put all this on the internet for everybody to look and see. But you can see all of those red dots where the growth's at. You can't hide them, you drive down the road and see the stuff, right?
The Valley District's pretty quiet.
It is. We get some fiber ran out through there, there's a good chance of that. So all of that being said, the new number, and what they want to look like, and as you see here, just to get a smirk, put it on the TV, you see, see where Potomac goes way west? Right, this is what it looks like now. See where it got cut off? We had to shrink Potomac geographically, to shrink the population, to get it equal, so.
I'm surprised at you, I almost expected an imposed map over top of the map.
Yeah, we can, we can do anything. So the new map, this is the drawn map. It's busy, because I wanted you to see kind of where the districts are drawn, so you can get a feel for the roads. It'll draw them. As you can see, it comes down Ridge Road, that's Ridge Road on the left kind of run, and that's where it's at. And on the, where it meets Tuscarora, that's running down mouth of the Peck and Beddington Road, down on the bottom corner. And in Tuscarora, and you can see the magic number we're shooting for is 22 and change. They're all, this is redrawn, the one big, the big thing that happened, that we had to do, historically, when you heard Adam Steven, you thought the polygon of the city. Well, you saw the population of the city at 21, 7, or at 17, 18 and change, we had to get it up to make equal the county population. So Adam Steven is no longer just inside the city. And you can tell by looking at it.
Actually, it looks like it's pulling down south, right?
We did, we ran, runs clear down to
To Long Street?
And where is Evans Run?
So you took in, you took in Winfield?
We did. We just, and all of this is driven by the blocks of the census, right? And we try and stick to major arteries.
We just got the census information three, three weeks ago.
We did this in three weeks.
And, and as soon as Gary's department got the census, you know, he came up right away and said, just want to let you know, we've been waiting on the release from the state, and the state didn't release it because they were going through all their gyrations of their redistricting. So as soon as they got their redistricting done, then they, they, they provided all the counties with the census. The first thing Gary did was give it to his GIS folks.
Right.
And, and this is purely data driven.
100%.
No
100%.
Driven exactly by the population and where the
So you use, you use the growth numbers that you have available without anything, any information from the city in order to generate these new growths projected?
That's exactly right.
Right, because the city, I'm sure has seen, I'm sure they've seen a good bit of growth. I mean, just the one project that we talked about is going to be 400 new apartments inside the city within the next couple of years.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And Markersburg Station's taken off again.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and they've done some clearing and all that on, on the gallery as well. So that, that's going to, I'm sure, going to be built out as well, so. Those are the big ones, for sure.
So really, all we need is if you're comfortable with the drawing as it stands, and if you have any questions. I mean, there's no decision to be made today other than post this. I can just attest that it is equally divided. Once December 9th comes and you go through that, you know, we can have opportunity to change before then and come back to you if anybody wants any of that change. Today is just a blessing to move forward and get the stuff posted. And there's actually a document that Penny has in the read ahead to sign that starts and schedules the hearing. And there's some legal leaves that has to happen by the clerk's office and such. We're just looking to get directly move forward.
But it does not affect any current
It does not affect any current council seat at all.
The, you're asking for a blessing of the map.
Yep.
However, we can't see the map in detail, but that's, that's a good thing, in my opinion.
And it, and once it goes up and everyone sees the detail, you may take and say, hey, we'd like to change this or whatever. You aren't carving anything stone today other than saying, yes, let's move forward and get it publicized.
The problem is we're, the clerk's office, Gary's clerk's office is on a pretty tight timeframe. Because as you know, we have an election next year. And the deadline for interested candidates to decide the run is in January. So it's, it's essential that we get this process started so that
They know where they're at.
Candidates know what magisterial district they're in.
I'm, I'm leaving, but I am in favor to move forward, just so you know.
I mean, it is important, you know, for people to know, because there, as this is drawn, the Potomac District is still open, we ran out of for council seat. The Valley District will be open with Council President Copenhevers positioned if he chooses to run. And those will be the two open, and then Adam Steven, which is where Dan's elected, you have three seats to be contended for, only two. But it doesn't affect any city person, I tried to kick you out.
No, I'm too entrenched in the center of Tuscarora, so you ain't moving me anywhere.
One click of the mouse, brother, you're out.
Little place there.
Put him in his own little island.
Right.
Make him a city council.
Yeah, there's a lot of work involved here. Nathan and Mrs. Malk have both been involved heavily to give us direction on what the legalities were and what we needed to do. Again, this is all driven by the data and the census lines, no input. We, we haven't, we haven't taken any input at all in things. We just basically took it, plotted where the growth was. I actually gave it to Michaela McDonough, who is one of our newest GIA specialists, she did a great job, she's got a lot of hours in it. And I even stayed away, and she drew. So you can honestly say that there's no gerrymandering going on, this is just redrawn the lines to equal stuff.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Wine?
Those were the couple of questions that were presented to me on WRNR. You know, people are going to be advocates for one thing or another. How, so when you go to explain to them that, you know, these are not gerrymandered up, they are just actually data driven.
And the beauty to this for you is, is that you're all at large. You don't represent where you're elected from, you represent 120,000 people in the county. So it serves no purpose to manage, you're not, you know, you're not trying to isolate yourself to your district to move it to get more populated, it's not at all. Right? Right, so it, nothing like what the state had to do with delegates and stuff. This, this really is by the numbers, it couldn't be any more simple.
All right.
Thank you.
Need a motion to approve and move forward. Second motion been made, second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries, Mr. Wine.
Thanks, honey.
Net average is out to about 18, 18,000 per district?
No, 20, 20, 22.
22, okay. Oh, with, with the projected growth, okay.
With the projected growth. It'll all, you'll see it, it'll hit the market really soon, probably by tomorrow. We just polish them up and put them on We just polish them up and put them on what's like that we have.
Okay.
One other thing on that is statute says you have to have that thirty-day notice, but this year, there's an exception to that. Legislation passed that, and there's a special session, and it only has to be fourteen days, so it's gonna be a... We didn't have it after a thirty days' notice in the statute.
Okay. Cause there, it's, there, there's a... There's a deadline in January, and some of those, if we don't get done a certain economy, if someone were to have moved into a district, don't they have to have residency in the district?
The deadline is January twenty-second, Congress, they don't have a... And they were late giving the, I mean, they had, the state had this federal census information for months, um, before it was released to us, and that's why they kinda gave us a break because we just got it.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Mr. Wyon.
Yes, sir.
Make sure that wife is taking good care of you. I figured I'd get you back from your little squeaky statement there, buddy. All right. Next on our agenda is Bill Curves and Angie Gray, um, from the Berkeley County, Berkeley Morgan County Health Department, uh, letter of support for harm reduction programs. Good to see y'all.
Ask Angie if she would present to you all?
That's great.
Better job than I could.
All right.
That should be in your package.
Yeah, we got all kinds of stuff over here stacked up beside me.
Good morning.
All right.
Morning.
Since we're this far away, are you guys okay with me because I'm under orders?
We're fine.
Thank you.
If you're fine, we're fine.
Thank you. Um, so thank you for giving us the opportunity today to come, um, and talk with you, um, asking for your support. Um, I need at least the majority of support to apply for our harm reduction application to OFLAC that is under the new legislation rule as of July. I need thirty days, um, to be able to review it. If, um, we're not approved, then harm reduction stops July, uh, January first. So I wanted to give them an plenty of time so the state had time for them, that thirty-day approval in case there's any changes that needs to be made. The document that I'll be sending is ninety-six pages long, um, to meet all of OFLAC's, um, requirements under the new legislation rule.
And I believe the state of West Virginia is well aware of our support of the program.
I am, and I appreciate, we're very fortunate in Berkeley County and have been, uh, since the conception of harm reduction. Not all counties have the support of their councils like we do, so we are very appreciative of that. However, I will note that, um, our county council has been very involved in the opioid epidemic. As we know, that Berkeley County is one of the highest rates of overdoses in our state, and in the top ten counties in the nation for the pandemic. I get calls almost on a daily basis, or emails on a daily basis from state entities and other entities at that level wanting to talk about the increase of overdose rates. Because, of course, this year's gonna be even worse than before. Shouldn't be this hard to help each other, people, and do what you need to do, but the bureaucracy has to be done, so asking for your support and the majority of the council's support so that I can send the applications out. Two applications will be going from Berkeley County because every site has to have its own application. There's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar application fee, um, for the initial, and then renewal fees after that. Each year will be fifty dollars. So we have the fixed site at the Health Department, and we have a mobile site in a very, um, area of Berkeley County. Um, so that's what I'll be submitting hopefully tomorrow, um, once our board, uh, this afternoon approves the new policy procedures and that many census page documents.
Can I have a word?
Um, I have Morgan's is ready to go to, and their council, um, has met yesterday.
So it'll be a totally separate document?
Yeah, every application has to be a separate document. Every site has to be a separate document, and you need the municipalities in that, uh, area to give the majority of the approval, so...
So you have to get approval from the city of Martinsburg also?
Yes, so they're, don't have a, another meeting, council meeting until December ninth. So they met, um, Tuesday evening as a committee, um, gave their support, gave their letter, and then are gonna rectify it officially under a meeting. And then, like I said, Morgan County Council, County Commission met yesterday, um, and they sent their letter of support for Morgan County. So it started there, um, this spring, actually, so...
And the town, babe?
Um, so we're not in their limits, so it... Yeah, we're just right outside of it. So since one of our programs is in the city limits here, one of our programs is in the county limits, that's why we had to vote, but it's coming, yeah.
How many jurisdictions in the state would submit this?
Yeah, so that's the sad thing, as we know that these programs are more being pushed, um, to really start to get more programs going. Um, I was told early on when we were, you know, uh, I even presented to legislation about this, saying we are already our own regulators. We don't need to be regulated under someone else, you know? It's kind of an insult, actually. Um, and I was told, um, the media had put out after, when all that happened, that, you know, a lot of the health departments, uh, were gonna close their harm reduction programs because of this amount of stuff. We all know what we've been under since the pandemic, and, you know, there's always shortages, snack issues, um. And the, I was told, "Don't listen to the media, you know, fake news." Well, seventeen of the programs that we're running in West Virginia, only eight of us are attempting to even apply for licensure. So you've already lost more than half in the state.
Is that right?
Yep, unfortunately.
So do I mean that A two applying will service a bigger area of people who come in, like, whether underserved areas to attend harm reduction in the state?
So in the legislation, um, we cannot serve anybody that doesn't have proof of residence in West Virginia, even if we're a bordering county. And if you talk to, um, our Eastern Panhandle Drug and Violent Test Force, they'll say drugs have no barriers. You know, our people are already going this way. We're so close to bordering states that people, families even, you know, um, cross those. But we will have to turn anybody away that doesn't have a West Virginia residency now.
But you can serve somebody from Hampshire County?
Yes, if I can prove they're a West Virginia resident, yeah. So it gets tough. Um, we've debated this out long and hard, especially with homeless population and those type of people, because we don't have addresses and that type of thing. So there's a lot of other things we can use, you know, even utility bills, um, registration, you know, just anything like that that we can prove. Fortunately, I'm under the understanding, if this doesn't change, that anybody that's in our program now that we already know, that we can vouch for them, that we know they're here in residence. So hopefully, um, that will hold, so...
And you have no trouble meeting all of the harm inspectors?
It's gonna be tough. Um, not that it changes the way we run the program at all, honestly. Um, it's just that there's a ton of trainings that have to be done, and they have to be done yearly. The same person has to take those same trainings every single year. Um, right now, I'm working with Marshall University. They already have those trainings that they were gonna put out the first week of December for a different entity, for not related to this. And they're gonna let the harm reduction, um, programs that are trying to stay up have their staff, and they're gonna put them on the website so that we can do them by web and get all of our, try to get all of our trainings in. Which takes a lot of time for, to dedicate staff to doing all of those trainings as well. Such things as motivational speaking and that type of thing is what they're requiring.
So Angie, one of the things that most people don't understand about harm reduction, and I was one of those ones early on when we talked about it, I said, "I don't think I could support that." So one way to help people to understand is to share a success story. Can you do that for us?
Lots of them, yes.
Pick the one that you want.
Pick one, okay. I'll pick one, and you've actually met them. Um, so worked with a couple. Um, I actually found them homeless, living in a car that was broke down in a parking lot here. Um, she was about six weeks pregnant, um, both of them injecting drugs. Um, lot of trauma, lot of trauma in their past life. You know, we don't always recognize what leads, and that trauma can be, not for everyone, but trauma can be a big issue with this. When you're being raped from the time you're eight years old, um, by family members, when your punishment is being your head put underwater, trying to drown you as your punishment, when you're prostituted by your parents, um, at a very early age, I just might be trying to find some way to relieve my pain as well.
And a lot of times, Angie, I tell people, you don't realize how close you are for being an addict because it only takes one thing that...
Exactly.
To become an addict or an alcoholic.
Yes, and when we prescribe medications and don't follow well, um, with people, and we all know how this really, you know, got to where it is. I always say West Virginians should just wake up one morning and start putting needles in their arms. We never saw this in my lifetime, and yours either, I'm sure. Um, but when you really get down to the why, that's what I do, we do in harm reduction, we get down to the why, and then try to build from there. And give people back, um, you know, actually feeling that they deserve to have a better life and work with them to get there. So this couple, it was tough. It took a lot of work, um, and it's a lot of dedication. Um, got them connected, got them in harm reduction, of course, and then got them connected to a treatment program outpatient. There were days that, you know, I'd call them to say, "Are you getting to your appointment? I don't have a ride. I don't have a way. I would take vacation and take it myself." Um, so they both, we got them both in recovery long enough to, the baby be born, um, born, baby born completely healthy, um, not having severe withdrawal, and if anybody have seen that with a newborn, that is agonizing. Um, and then home and trying to get them job placements and those type of things. After about six months, um, they did have a relapse. Um, they needed to be separated. So we helped facilitate that. One actually left the area for a while, and now they are back together. Um, both recovered, have their baby, and one of them is actually working as a peer recovery coach now and getting back to...
Right.
So. And it shows how behavior modification takes a lot of time. It's just not one and done. And don't give up on people if they do have a relapse because that's expected, actually, in addiction. But that's one example. If my small but mighty staff, as I call them, are here, they could give you millions of them. Um, just even the small things that we do to make an improvement in someone's life or their families and then overall in the community, that overall makes an impact, for sure. Um, I'd also like to say that this document that's gonna be sent and this applications for all three wouldn't have been made possible without the help of Caroline Wilson, who is our case worker for the core, um, program, which is under our governor's pilot project, um, with my limited time every time, where she actually took the document, my original work, um, updated it, put in the stuff that needed to be under this, um, and has been working very closely with me for the last week and a half to get that document ready to go. So I really wanna give kudos to her, um, because I know I couldn't have done it myself.
Yeah, it's a great program.
Yeah, and the program doesn't work without the community partners. You know, we have, um, W B U, Berkeley Medical Center, send somebody from their bridge program. They're right there, talk about warm handoff, they right there to link them to their, um, Suboxone Bridge in the E D. The Berkeley County Recovery Resource Center sends peer recovery coaches. The Berkeley County Quick Response Team sends peer recovery coaches. And under this, we don't need them today, but I've already been working with them. We'll have to have M O Us, formal M O Us for that, um, for the future of this. But it doesn't work without all of us working together. It's a very much a team and a community effort. And linking them to those people in the community that can help them in the areas that we can't.
All right, need a...
So all you need is...
Majority.
Our...
Your blessing.
Support of the resolution.
Without your blessing, it doesn't happen.
And, and it's ready to go, or you need something else?
Nope, all I need is that letter.
Ooh.
I'm, I'm trying to make it as easy as I can, and thank you, Penny, for helping arrange all this, so...
Mr. President, I move to, uh, accept...
Approve?
Uh, approve the harm reduction program to the Berkeley Morgan Board of Health.
Letter of support.
Letter of support.
And allow the president to sign it.
No, it, it, this has everybody signed.
Well, does it have everyone?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so a motion to support the, or support the letter of, or... Please allow it to be approved, I'm sorry.
Has support for it.
Seconded.
All right, this motion been made. Second, any further discussion?
Other than with Angie, she said it takes, you know, a team, which it does.
But it... Yeah, gotta have leadership.
Yep. You and I have worked together for a long time, many of you guys, Dave and I, you know, all of us. You do have to have leadership. There has to be somebody that's that cheerleader keeping everybody going on those hard days, because there are hard days. But thank you, like I said, without your support, and we're blessed because not all counties have this. Some counties have actually took down their programs, you know, um, and had them closed, which is really sad, that they can't, we can't bond and work together and really get an understanding. Like you said, on the surface of this, when you first hear of it, you're thinking, "What? No." But it is so, so big.
What's Jefferson do?
I really couldn't tell you. Yeah.
Strong tea.
They've had the program, the, the grant. I know they have a room full of supplies, but we service Jefferson County residents as well. They, um, I don't know of any days that they even have the program. Yeah, um, and matter of fact, when we were at the rec center and some of our busiest time doing all of those thousands of vaccines, the state called us because Jefferson County Health Department had four hundred doses of Narcan that was gonna expire in a week. And they thought if anybody in the state could get them out, it would be Berkeley Morgan County Health Department. Um, of course, my team was tied up, but through one of our employees that's part-time that just works harm reduction, and all three of the sites, came to me and said, "Can I lead this and take it?" "I'll do it." And I said, "Absolutely," because what does leaders do? You build leaders, right?
Right.
So in conjunction with the core team and some of the Recovery Resource Center team, they went all over this county and set up pop-ups. And, I mean, even in Abe's parking lot, and the E P T A driver come by and said, "Can I get trained? Can I get? Absolutely. We want you to have that on that bus." And they got out every dose of that four hundred before it expired. Yeah. Yeah. So like I always say, Doug, we have a lot of talented people in this county.
We do, a lot of caring people.
Caring, yes.
All right, um, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all.
Please keep up the good work. What, what, what kind of budget is this for, for your harm reduction?
A hundred and fifty...
A hundred and fifty thousand.
And that's for both counties, so a small amount of that is in for Morgan, because of course, that program is smaller by population.
Right.
Um, and the rest is, is for Berkeley.
Okay. All right, keep us posted.
All right, thank you, guys, very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, yeah. When, when are you gonna get the letter out?
As soon as we get done signing it.
It'll be, it'll be right today.
Okay.
Just, yeah, thank you.
He's working really hard for you, Angie.
Hmm?
He's really working hard for you.
He is, yeah.
Nice change. Trying to move the laws.
Although, when we talk about team, we always gotta get, we gotta, we gotta give Penny and Alan some credit here, because we all know that backbone in the...
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
They're the, they're the backbone. We're just the chicken wings.
That's what I always say. It's my team, my homie, keep me straight, where I need to be, I'm in.
All right, next on...
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Allen Davis County Administrator, State Budget Revision Number Six Fund, zero-zero-one.
Yes, sir. Um, State Budget Revision Number Six to the General Fund. Um, since your last state budget revision, which you approved on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, we received twenty-three checks and A C Hs. Um, just a couple things with, they, they only totaled a hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars, but a couple unique things. Um, you'll see that, um, we received a check for nine hundred and ten dollars from the City Martinsburg. Um, one morning, the, uh, City Martinsburg garbage truck decided they couldn't wait for the gate to open, so they just pushed their way through. Um, and of course, they didn't report it. We had, we had them on camera. So we sent them a bill for repair, so we did receive a restitution in the amount of nine hundred and ten dollars from the City Martinsburg. Uh, Mrs. Mauk is there. Mrs. Mauk worked, uh, with the, um, the state of West Virginia on some unclaimed property. We did receive a check for ten thousand, one hundred and five dollars for unclaimed property. Uh, two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars from the state of West Virginia for, uh, certain clerk's office, uh, for records, records management, grant reimbursement. Uh, eight checks, um, to the I T department for I T services totaling forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, we also received a check for eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars from the Berkeley County Public, uh, Service Water District for a hazmat, uh, incident that occurred on October seventeenth at their Williamsport Pike, uh, facility in Falling Waters. Um, and then the fifty thousand dollar, two hundred and eighty-seven dollar, uh, federal COSAP, uh, grant reimbursement. And then finally, um, as you know, our SAFRA grant with the, with Baker Heights is winding down, but we did, we did receive reimbursement of... receive reimbursement of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars for the SAFER grant reimbursement for salaries for Baker Heights career firefighters. Recommending disbursement, of course, the two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars will go back in supplies and materials for the circuit clerk. The forty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars will go into the supplies and materials line for information technology. We did receive a refund of four hundred dollars from an ICC seminar from the West Virginia Code Officials Association, which will go back into training and education for the engineering department. The reimbursement for wages as well as the eight thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars for the hazmat response reimbursement will go back to emergency services. We did receive a check for six thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars for an auto claim, which deals with a 2020 Chevy Tahoe. That will go into the central garage account. I'm also requesting that we place a hundred and forty thousand, or I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars in the Sheriff's Department Supplies and Materials. This has to do with funds that we had encumbered in contingency to reimburse the Sheriff's Department for a number of items that was agreed upon last fiscal year that were not purchased until this fiscal year. And we will pull you the funds. Seventeen thousand, nine hundred dollars of that is reimbursement of one, all traffic solution devices. I don't know if you've seen the devices throughout the county.
They come, they have blue flashing lights.
They are.
They do work.
The price of those two devices is thirty-five eight, and we paid for half, we paid for one. We committed to purchasing ammunition. The total amount of ammunition purchased was ninety thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. And we also agreed to replace the divers' dry suits in the amount of, of that expenditure, the total of eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. So it comes to a hundred and twenty thousand, seven forty-four. And then that closes out our commitment to the sheriff.
I would, I would think those traffic monitors that we have, we could probably use about another half a dozen more.
We could. And they're really, I actually came, I was coming up from Inwood on eighty-one north, and one of them was setting alongside of the road. And you saw it well, well in advance of getting up to it.
The sad part about this is once they, once they get, when the blue lights come on, you see the brake lights come on. But ideally, it'd be great if we were able, and I know the sheriff will, to have a cruiser about a mile up in front of, beyond that, saying, you had your own.
Yeah.
You know? Because they're, they definitely hit the brakes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they'll hit the brakes just immediately. You could see the lights coming on. And I had, I tried to go up through there, set my cruise control at fifty-five through those construction zones. I try. But I want to tell you what, I don't know how many times I just about got ran off the road for going too slow.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah. All right. Entertained a motion to approve State Budget Revision Number Six Fund Zero Zero One.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We have a request to waive engineering and planning preliminary plat fees for Spring Mills Community Park.
As the council is aware, we currently have four active park development projects underway. Of course, we have the twenty-two plus acres, plus or minus acres in South Berkeley Inwood. We have Sportsman's Paradise. We're, will continue to work on the developments of the Forehouse Farm and then the Spring Mills Community Park. If the council will recall, on April the eighth of two thousand twenty-one, you waived the sketch plat fee for the Spring Mills Community Park, which is located at the corner of St. Andrews Drive and Handel Mills Road in Falling Waters. That particular fee that was waived was seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty cents. The plat, it has now reached preliminary plat design and is being suspended as we speak. The total fees associated with the preliminary plat is, the total is four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents. And you do have a request before you to waive those fees, which is what we have done and asked for several projects.
Is that ten acre parcel?
It is.
Walking trail?
Yes.
Fitness trail, I guess.
It's ten acres that was given to the Board of Education, and then they're leasing it into parks and recreation. And we are working with parks and recreation and developing it into a walking park with some pavilions and things like that.
I hope you have some fitness items on.
What will be for you?
Hey, I need all of that.
Mr. Barnhart.
Well, it's nice with the amount of townhomes that are in that particular area that the developer has made this generous donation.
Oh, yeah.
Open space.
Yeah. Well, the school board entered into the, to the long-term lease for a dollar, I believe, and, and the local community is taking charge and leading the whole project, so.
Yeah, and I assume that the parks and record and maintenance falls on the park.
Yeah, well, actually, the lease is with parks and records. Is that right, Eddie?
Yes, sir.
Eddie, you want to make the motion?
Certainly will. A motion that council waived the fees of an amount of four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents for the Spring Mills Community Park.
I think that's a good idea. I think I can second it.
Very energetic of you, Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Davis, family court MOU?
Yes, sir. Don't shoot the messenger. As you are aware, West Virginia Code fifty-one dash two A dash one says that we must enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Supreme Court of Appeals for the family court facilities that are located in our judicial center. Currently, it is.
Said he found out.
Three thousand, nine hundred and forty, according to their calculations.
For the family court portion?
Family court only. That's all they pay us for.
All right. So what's the amount of that?
The total amount of the lease is six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per month, which is equivalent to ten dollars per square foot per annum.
That's about half the market, going market.
So the current contract that we have expires at the end of this year. Actually, it expires on June thirtieth of twenty twenty. We received the new contract from the Director of Administration and Council for the Supreme Court of West Virginia, asking that the council sign and return the MOU no later than November fifteenth, which has already passed. And if we fail to approve it, they'll just assume that it's been automatically renewed.
And how long is the term for?
It runs from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. It's a five-year contract.
I forget, you show automatically renewed subject from July one, twenty twenty-six to June thirty.
If you take no action, it just automatically renews anyway.
Hey.
So they sat on it for over a year, right? You said it expired June of twenty twenty?
No, it expires, this new, yes, it actually expires, it expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Right. This is, this new contract becomes effective July first, twenty twenty-one.
But they sat on till just now. I like to put this on next week's agenda because I want Mr. Bellagatti to check into some stuff for me.
Absolutely.
All right.
Do you want to table it or?
Table it to next week. I mean, the week after.
Well, two weeks.
Right. Next thing you have is Michael Baker.
The last matter I have is, has to deal with Sportsman's Paradise. If the council will recall, September of, actually, the summer of last year, commencing, or up until September of twenty twenty, through Region Nine in Bill Clark at that time, we worked with Michael Baker in developing a proposal with what we called Phase One of Sportsman's Paradise. It included everything to the north and west of Pickleport, that whole area. And since then, we've added some additional acreage further up, upstream. What we asked them to do at that time was develop a plan for us, assess the roadway, provide us with the economic impact analysis. And we even, we even thought about doing a drone video. And our thought was fly the drone from the Maryland side over to Sportsman's Paradise and actually do a conceptual, we would, we would fly the drone and do the, the video. And Michael Baker would take it and then they would, they would put all the bells and whistles to it and give us a conceptual video of what it would look like if someone was kayaking from the Maryland side to Sportsman's Paradise. With, we recently became aware that there was some EDA tourism money available through the U.S. Economic Development Administration, which we received notification last week, on Friday, November twelfth, that it was no longer available. We had met with Troy Truax from Michael Baker some time ago and asked him to put us, put together a proposal so we could apply for that EDA money. The, the proposal that you have in your packet, the total amount is ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. But the EDA documentation, the U.S. EDA application required that we do a very, very detailed environmental study and environmental documentation. That environmental documentation alone was thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars. That's no longer necessary because the EDA grant is off the table. However, in speaking with Rachel and Tracy, there's a lot of money out there for development. But it's like everything else. We have to have a plan in place. We have to have at least, we have to have a conceptual plan, which in this case would include the drone video, as well as what the impact, the economic impact of having a park down there would have. Having said all of that, the new proposal, if you take out the thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars, which, for the environmental documentation, which is no longer needed, the proposal from Michael Baker to do what I call Phase One, because it, like I said, it's everything from Pickleport to the north and west. It doesn't include the parcels that we have further downstream. It would include the draft concept plan development, final concept plan development. Just those two tasks alone is about a hundred and thirty-six hours. Once we provide the drone video, another fifty-six hours in developing the drone video in, into the, into a presentation that is approved by the council. A hundred and sixty-two hours to do access roadway improvement study, and another thirty-one hours for economic impact analysis. The total cost of that would be about sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand, eleven dollars. This is something that we've been talking about for a long time. Michael Baker, Troy Truax, and his staff have come down from there. They're actually stationed in the Harrisburg area. They have come down and walked the sites with, walked the site with Jack. I think that they would really, really do a good job for us. We would contract through Region Nine and, and pay for, you know, pay, certainly pay the fee. So my recommendation is that the council give it serious consideration.
All right. Yeah. And this has been, I mean, the property was, the first phase of that was probably done about thirteen to fifteen years ago.
Actually, it's done like about a year and a half before I came here. And I've been there sixteen and a half years.
Right.
So about fifteen, sixteen years ago.
So, and, and the crazy thing about it is there could be up to ten million dollars to do this part. In one grant.
And, and we met with Department of Natural Resources two or three months ago to talk about, like, not only a boat ramp there, but also public fishing access down at Stone Bridge, Stone Bridge Bridge. And their first question was, well, do you have, do you have a concept plan? Plus, I think, you know, particularly as we get through, if, if the council approves this, as you go through the concept plan development, I think it would be a great opportunity to get Parks and Rec involved, particularly with the new director and the strategic banking process that, that has his own point. I think it would be a great opportunity to tie all this together.
All right. Entertained a motion to go into a contract with Michael Baker International for Sportsman's Paradise feasibility.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Should those funds come from the Quality Life Fund or do?
No, it'll come from Quality of Life.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Speaking of quality of life, I did have, I had a very, very good conversation with Dr. Murphy yesterday. The Board of Education earlier this week endorsed the councils, this council's quality of life initiatives that you have taken through your pilot program.
Good. That's, that's.
So they took a formal vote, so that is now on record.
That's encouraging and greatly appreciated. All right. There will be a need for executive session, I know, for at least real estate matters. Anything else, Mr. Davis?
No, sir.
Yeah. All right. We have a motion to go into executive session for real estate matters. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.
There, there will be no action.
All right, we're out of the executive session. We're back in regular session. No action will be taken. So Mr. Barnhart, if you do the honors?
I would love to do the honors, Mr. President.
We are recessed.